Donna Rossmer, representing District Four. Then I have Mrs. Krista Goodrich, representing District Two. This is Mrs. Heidi Crimmens, who is filling in today. She is our staff attorney and she's filling in for Dr. Evans. Then over on my far right, I have Mrs. Les Gilmore, our agency clerk. Mrs. Jessie Thompson, representing District Three. And Mr. Ruben Cologne will not be with us today in the workshop, but he will join us later this evening for the meeting. And then I have Dr. Carmen Balgobin, our superintendent. And I am Jamie Haynes. I represent District One and I am your chair at this time. So, we have four items on today's workshop. There's a lot of information that's going to be shared. We have timed out how long it should take and we're going to do our best to stick to the timings. So, Dr. Balgobin, we're ready to go ahead and start with item 2.01, Testing Calendar Focus Group Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Julian Azaria Vaya, to please join us, along with Mr. Kyle Schicker, our interim coordinator for Research Evaluation and Accountability, joined by Mr. Michael Semino, our analyst for Assessment and Data. They will share with you a presentation about our Testing Calendar Focus Group Update. The team has met with a group of teachers on several locations. They've collected their input and they have, as a result of that, made some adjustments to the testing calendar. Rationalization will be provided by the team. So, thank you, guys. Go ahead and take it away.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board Members. Very happy to be here to talk to you about the assessment calendar and beyond that, really look at truly what teaching and learning is about. So, without further ado, I'll begin the presentation with everything that we do aligns to our strategic plan. And this particular one is obviously our goal, or the only goal that we have. It is about teaching and learning. It's all students who are engaged in high levels of learning every single day. And so, when we look at the focus group that Dr. Balgobin mentioned, there's reasons why we do what we do. And it's important that we refine our practices every single year. So, in today's presentation, you are going to hear about the... And beyond focus group, it really is an assessment steering committee that we will continue to meet with teachers throughout the school year. And they will go into detail as to how many teachers we're looking at across different sections of the entire district, elementary, middle, and high school. It's all encompassing. And so, they're going to go into further detail about that and about the findings that they've had. But I want to really talk about the... Before I hand it over to Kyle and to Mike Semino, really truly talk about what is the difference between making sure that we have... You know, there's a saying that more time doesn't always necessarily equal to great learning. More time of teaching doesn't always equal to great learning. Let me explain that for a second. When we have a plan that we put in place... Think about your own plans that you have. Whether you are a businessperson and you're thinking about the return on investment for that plan. You have to have checkpoints for that to truly see, is this plan being effective or is it not effective? Right? And your plan has to be in alignment with what that greater goal is. So, in education, our plan is to ensure that every single student masters the benchmarks that is aligned to the state standards. So, that alignment piece is important and we're going to go into that also in this presentation. We have 180 days to teach students, right? We have a curriculum that is robust by the state of Florida that dictates what standards students must master and what should they learn and be able to do by the end of those 180 days. And so, when we're looking at that of that instruction, there is also state guidelines that says a district cannot test more than 5% of district-wide assessments, right? And so, you're going to see in the presentation through very transparency of where we were at in 2021 and where we're at now in 2025. So, you can see the comparison of... Through the direction of Dr. Balgobin, it's not about more tests. It's about making sure that the test and that what we are doing in our classroom is aligned to the expectations of the standards that we have to not just expose our students, that our students have to master. And so, there is... There's a process in order to do that, which we will continue to go over during this presentation. And I want you to think about, as we go through the presentation, the different dashboard reasons why we have the dashboard, what information our teachers are able to glean from that that they cannot glean from a state assessment. Because there are things that they're able to glean from our Volusia quarterly assessments and you'll see through the feedback from teachers that is invaluable. It's invaluable because the data tells you how you are able to remediate. That's fill in the gaps. That's where remediation is. How you can use that data to provide intervention, maybe frontload certain things that students struggle with? That's different than remediation. And how do you also take that data to be able to accelerate students that are not just on grade level, but that are beyond grade level? So, all of that information is very valuable for teachers and you will hear some of the comments and takeaways from teachers regarding this. But you will also hear some of the things that we can do to make it better as we streamline the process this year. Right? So, we've talked about this, the purpose of today. And so, we talked about maximizing instructional impact. But you... But we have to use appropriate tools to do that and then minimize that testing time. And you can go ahead, Kyle, and start the presentation.
Absolutely. So, in an effort to increase our collaboration and our communication with all of our stakeholders, we have also created social media videos and we've been putting those out. So, we're going to play one of those here that ties into the last piece that Dr. Vaya was addressing, which was that reduction in testing time.
So, these video snippets actually have been released by our Communications Department to also keep our community engaged and well-informed as to what are the differences between... You know, talk about VBAs or you talk about these district assessments. What is that compared to state assessments? How do we utilize the data? So, actually, Mike Semino has been the spokesperson and has done over a series of videos of this. And so, there's a couple of them embedded in our presentation so you can hear what our community actually has been seeing as well.
So, over the past five years, Volusia County Schools has really been working on decreasing the total amount of assessments that your students have to take. So, for example, five years ago, ELA used to have between nine to 10 district assessments that were administered throughout the course of the year.
Look at that!
Once Dr. Balgobin became superintendent, we really focused on reducing the total number of assessments that students have to take. In total, we've seen a 70% local assessment reduction over the past three years. So, currently now, the only students' district assessments that students have to take in ELA is VBA I, VBA II, and VBA III.
All right. So, I'm going to kind of piggyback on that video here and share some data with you, as you can see on the screen. Over the past three years, we really have focused, since Dr. Balgobin became superintendent, to reduce the total number of assessments that we have. When you look at the 21-22 school year and we look at all of the district assessments that we administered, we administered 1.25 million district assessments in the 21-22 school year. Once we started the VBA process in the 22-23 school year, you've seen those numbers consistently decrease. This past year, that number is down to 406,000 assessments. And that's, again, each individual assessment that a student has had to take, a combination of all of those. So, you can see over two-thirds of our assessments have decreased since that 21-22 school year. Now, this is really important because the state... As FLDO legislation states, students cannot spend more than 5% of their time taking assessments. When you factor in all of our local assessments, along with those state assessments that they have to take, such as PM I, PM II, PM III, SAT, ACT, when we factor all of those assessments in, our Volusia average currently is less than 2%. And as a direct result of that reduction that we've had by utilizing the VBAs and reducing those assessments by almost 70%.
So, there are two different assessments that students have to take in Volusia County Schools. The first one are your state assessments, progress monitoring tests. So, there are three of those assessments, PM I, PM II, and PM III. PM I is given at the start of the year and is a diagnostic test. That test measures content that students learn throughout the entire year. They take that same test again mid-year. And again, that test measures content throughout the entire year of the school year. And then PM III, given at the end of the year, also measures content throughout the entire school year. Now, that's much different than our VBAs, our local assessments. Our local assessments here in Volusia County Schools, VBA I measures only the content so far taught in quarter one. Now, that specifically measures contents from the first grading period. Then they take VBA II. VBA II measures content that was taught in quarter one and in quarter two. And then lastly, VBA III is in the third marking period and measures content taught in quarter one, quarter two, and quarter three. So, that big difference between the two tests is that while the state test measures the entire year every single time, our local assessments are chunked based on the content that your child has actually learned.
And that last part's so important. You know, knowing how your students perform on the content that they have been specifically taught by your teachers is imperative to drive in the instruction every single day. So, one thing that's huge about our local assessments, it's the data that we're able to get, the specific data that we're able to get about how every single child performs. Unfortunately, with the state data, when we receive the state data, we're given the report as a one or zero for every benchmark, meaning it just tells us if the student got that question correct or incorrect. Now, when we look at our local assessments, what we're able to get is a lot of specific information. So, we don't just get the information such as a benchmark, which is a large piece of content. We're able to look specifically at the question and then we're able to dive into those individual student misconceptions based on the answer choices that they selected. So, that's where our... What you see on the screen here is our student data dashboard. It's a tool that helps teachers take what used to take me, honestly, all weekend to analyze data. I used to teach eighth grade science. I would spend four, five hours going through all of my data reports. I had an Excel spreadsheet trying to figure out exactly where a student struggled. Here, what we're able to do is we're able to look precisely, within, honestly, two to three minutes, and identify exactly where every single student is struggling, all the way down to that specific question, all the way down to the distractor that may have gotten them to miss... You know, mess up the question on that assessment. So, here, what you see is we have a report that shows every single student what they selected for every answer choice. And it's going to allow us to group students specifically according to their skill set and misconceptions on each of those items. Now, this is really huge for three key things. First off, remediation. If a student is struggling on a specific piece of content, we can find groups of students that all struggled on that specific piece of content and provide those remediation activities to make sure when they take their next assessment, they are able to show that they've learned that content or they've learned that material. We're also able to provide intervention, meaning that we can then forward plan to make sure that these students, if they're struggling with something and we identify something that they're not doing well with, that we can provide those interventions to make sure in the future, they don't struggle again. And then lastly, we can accelerate because a lot of our students end up doing very well on these assessments. And we need to see how they're performing to make sure we can move those students forward and continue pushing them to provide extra tools for them to show the next level of learning that they can achieve. So, these assessments, it's great to have an instructional tool, but we have to make sure that these instructional tools are solid tools for the classroom. Now, we measure whether or not our assessments are successful on two key metrics. We call that reliability and validity. And they're completely different. So, when we're talking reliability, we're specifically looking at that consistent pattern of those assessment results. Meaning, if a student took a test on Tuesday and then retook that same test on Thursday with no remediation occurring, the student should score the same. It's kind of like how if you take the SAT and then you don't remediate, you don't go to tutoring, you're pretty much going to get the same score on the SAT without any type of intervention or remediation along the way. So, that's one of the key things. We have metrics that we use in our office, in REA, Research Evaluation and Accountability, to measure whether or not those tests are statistically showing those consistent trends. And that's even relevant within the answers students select. So, you wouldn't expect, if item number three on a test is a very easy question, I wouldn't expect to see my gifted and highest achieving students getting that question wrong. If my highest achieving students are struggling on a question, it's going to decrease the reliability of that test. And that's how we're able to identify things like guessing to make sure that when we're reviewing data with our teachers, we want to make sure that that data is exactly prescribed based on what they need to learn in that classroom environment. And the second piece of that is validity, which is, again, it's a completely different measure. What validity does? Do our assessments predict a future performance on a future test? So, if we are building our assessments with, you know, making sure we're measuring the benchmarks appropriately, making sure the rigor matches the rigor of the state test, then our assessments should be predictive. Meaning, if a student scores a level five on a VBA, on our local assessment, I wouldn't expect to see that student score level one on the state test. That would decrease the validity. There should be a relationship between how they perform on our local tests and how they perform on the state test. And what that does is it makes sure that we're able to provide the best type of instruction that we can in the classroom because every single student is different. Some students perform really well on assessments and are able to show that and we need to be able to get that data to show how we can instruct them in the future. So, when speaking about that validity, what this next slide is going to show is how we've changed over the process with our district assessments. So, you heard me earlier talk about the number of tests. Back in 2021, we had a lot of tests, 1.25 million. There were a lot of district assessments. And unfortunately, at that time, if a student scored a 70% or above, we could only tell you with 50% certainty whether or not that student would score three or above on the state test. So, we've really looked specifically at our assessments and how can we make them better? How can we improve? So, in 2024, last year, if a student scored a 70% or above on VBA III, there was a 99% certainty that that student was going to score three or above on the state assessment. So, that was not random. There was a deliberate action plan set forth back in 2021 when we started looking at this data. We would bring teachers in and have them look at our assessments and have them create new questions. We would look at the test item specs. We would look at the actual release documents from the state, make sure the level of rigor that the state is expecting matches the level of rigor on our local assessments. We would look at our curriculum maps as well and see those... See exactly what is being taught in the curriculum to make sure that our assessments reflected accurately what was being taught in the classrooms. We would go all the way down to make sure... We have a... Literally have a book that tells us what level, what grade level every single word is according to what they should expect to see on the state PM III. And if that grade level is above the grade level that they're in that class, that word is pulled off that assessment. We go through the ELA teams and I go through every single test to make sure we're meeting all of those exact specifications because the last thing we want is, you know, I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. They're taking these assessments too. And I don't want them being assessed on something that's above or beyond their grade level and their level of expectation. And we need to make sure we're guiding our teachers with the correct information because they're making instructional decisions based on the data that they're seeing on these assessments. And having a solid assessment not only guides how you're going to instruct those students, but then teachers can also look at those assessments. They're out there on canvas for teachers to provide feedback. So, they're also able to then reply to that data, reply to those questions. And we make adjustments along the way with those tests and we'll actually change the test items based on teacher feedback. All of those pieces have really helped us make our assessments not only more reliable, but also more valid so teachers have better instructional tools to guide their forward progress with their students in their classrooms.
And Mike addressed one of the biggest boulders that we see as being an impact for that jump in our validity. And that's that teacher involvement and principal involvement. So, this school year, just as we have in years past, we've invited our teacher-focused steering committee. So, in these committees, our teachers worked with us on identifying what has worked well and what did not work well this year. A lot of these teachers have seen Mike's progression of DIAs, VSTs. Now, we're onto VBAs. So, they've seen the whole scope and different experiences across the board. We had 72 teachers that were able to meet with us. They met with us face-to-face on the east side, face-to-face on the west side. And we also provided Microsoft Teams meetings for these teachers so they could join, whether they were able to make it to that face-to-face meeting or not. We also had 56 schools that were represented out of those 72 teachers. And all of our tested subjects, grades K-12, were included within these 72 teachers. These meetings were not just one-off meetings. They were meetings that we held face-to-face, Teams after that, and then multiple renditions from principal to teachers, back to principals, back to teachers, in a cyclical nature. And you'll see that on the next slide. We did include principals as well. We had 11 principals that represented all levels, elementary, middle, and high, both representing the east side and the west side of the county. They had the same conversations. Steeped in what worked well? What systems did you put in your building to ensure that student success was paramount on those tests? And also, what should be refined? What were some ideas that you had that you would like to see implemented or changes that might lead to greater student success and learning? And so, here's that cyclical nature, okay? This diagram shows the intentionality that we have to ensure that our teachers and our principals are the center point to our decisions in our testing calendar. We first met with those teachers in a face-to-face meeting with Teams on the side if teachers wanted to join the Teams meetings. Once we had an opportunity to digest that information, the teachers and us, to provide them a draft of everything that they have responded with, provided feedback in, and their experiences, we then presented it to them. We said, here's what we have heard and this is kind of our draw, right? Our first draft. And they got to poke holes in it. And we had conversations about why this is good or why this isn't so good. Maybe there's a different way to present it. And once they were able to get their hands on the actual calendar to see where those dates line up, because when we're talking in our conversations, it's... It sounds good, right? You know, we had a lot of great ideas that are proposed, but then when you see it on the calendar, you wonder, oh, maybe that date won't work out, right? Because that's the week after we get back or that's the week before we get back from a spring break or a winter break. So, seeing that calendar definitely helps, right? So, after we were able to digest that information and bring that back to our teachers, they gave us what they thought would be the better approach. Brought that to our curriculum coordinators, who are in every single one of these meetings. So, our curriculum coordinators, our directors, executive directors, and Dr. Vaya were all members of these committees, meeting with us and listening to the conversation firsthand. When we all sat down as coordinators, we looked at the calendar they presented and we enjoyed it. We really liked what they said. Things that we were able to move, we did move. And those are going to be presented to you in our changes as well. Once our curriculum coordinators finalized their... Our draft for the principals, we presented to the principals. We talked them through, here's what your teams are thinking. Here's what the teachers are telling us from their perspective. And then we got their perspective on the building level. You know, things that happen in the classroom versus things that happen in every classroom in my building may be different. So, these principals took what they saw and heard from our teachers and they added their nuance to what the calendar was. Once we got that in our hands, we brought it back to the teachers. We said, here's what your leaders are saying. This is what they're seeing. And we continued that process. We did that three times and we met with our teacher teams through Teams after that, right? So, we had that first face-to-face meeting. But because these were after-hours meetings, we wanted to ensure that our teachers would be able to meet with us. So, we provided them a Microsoft Teams link. And I want to send a huge thank you to those teachers who spent... It was about seven hours total that these teachers were able to meet with us and coordinate with us. There were some members of the team who definitely put in more than seven hours because we have a Microsoft Teams channel. And these teachers are top communicators, for sure. So, you know who you are. And for those of you on the committee, you'd be able to see that Microsoft Teams chat and we have those teachers who are providing their feedback to every little coincidence or nuance that we find within the calendar. So, thank you very much. And thank you to the curriculum coordinators and principals who are within those Teams chats as well. All right. So, some of the key pieces of feedback, the feedback that we gathered here, we have, again, our what's working well and our areas for improvement. All right? So, our what's working well, our VBA data. It's supporting small group instruction. This is diving into what Mike was just talking about. It's that proof of learning, right? We're able to actually see on those data dashboards when those teachers are in their PLCs. They love the fact that they can pull up that data dashboard and get specific to where those students' gaps are or where the opportunities for acceleration are. And that was across all levels, elementary, middle, and high. Teachers also... Teachers and principals both provided that their assessments are well-aligned. And this goes to that validity that Mike was talking about as well. The benchmarks being aligned to our state assessments and to the curriculum maps is essential to ensure that we have an appropriate tool for our students in measuring their learning. We also heard the teachers share praises at the elementary school level that their curriculum maps guide their instruction and inform their everyday to ensure student learning. Teacher involvement in the assessment creation. Mike addressed that we have a canvas for all of our Volusia benchmark assessments where these teachers can go on, preview the assessments, and provide feedback and say, maybe we missed a period or something, so little as that. Or maybe it's a lot more in-depth where this item is not hitting the benchmark, right? After all of our cycles that we go through, there might be some items that the teachers find more appropriate than others and they provide that feedback to us. And Mike monitors that, along with the curriculum coordinators, for any input that is provided within those Canvas submissions. The streamlined windows was something that was implemented this school year in response to our communication, our collaboration with our school teams. The year prior, we had VBAs that were staged out. So, at the elementary school level, they felt like they... That we were testing every week. There was this new test coming around. So, in response to that feedback, this school year, we implemented a VBA two-week window. So, everything is condensed into one or two days, depending on the grade level. If you've got elementary, ELA, math and science, or if it's just math and science, it might all be just within one week. These administrations were also squeezed into just one day as well. So, that was feedback and collaboration with our teams last year. And it was something that they thought worked well. And so, that's something that we plan to continue on as we move forward into the 25-26 school year. Our areas for improvement and our opportunities here, our VBAs being scheduled too close to winter breaks and spring breaks, right? So, if you think back, we have our VBA II window is at second quarter, right? We're assessing the standards that are covered in quarter one and in quarter two. And where does that always line up? It's with winter break, right? So, the teams identified that if we provided that assessment a week earlier, we could actually use that week for makeups instead of our... Having our tests actually begin on that day. So, that's something that we looked at and brought back with our curriculum teams. The second thing is PM I window being too late to be truly diagnostic. That PM I test, the State Progress Monitoring Assessment, is supposed to provide a diagnostic or a baseline-level data point. This is where our students start, right? Teaching at the very beginning of our school year. We have teaching that occurs. And the way that the current calendar is, we had five weeks before PM one. But our state allows us to provide that assessment on day one. Now, of course, we don't want to do it on day one because you have all the nuances of building culture with your class and ensuring that students are in their policies and procedures without question. And we also have technology, right? We want to make sure that all of our technology is working. Sometimes that's difficult on day one, especially when you're doing all the other things of making sure that the students know where they're supposed to be in the first place. So PM one is supposed to be truly diagnostic. And when we look at our calendar, we do see that there is opportunity for us to address this as well. Development of our school testing plans is something that, as a district level, we want to support our teams with at the school. Providing a uniform approach to how our schools are able to manage the logistics and handling of certain flexible situations with our student success is something that our teachers listened or responded very openly towards us. And the last piece is continuing communication with our teachers. Our teachers are the essential pulse point for us to understand what's going on in our classroom. Providing opportunities throughout the year would allow us to have a continuing pulse of what's happening in our classrooms when it deals with assessment. So they would like to see an improvement in the amount of opportunities they have to provide input on the assessments throughout the school year. So looking forward to the 2025, 2026 school year. Our testing calendar, as provided, has taken all of our feedback from all of our stakeholders, those seventy-two teachers across fifty-six campuses and our eleven principals across all grade levels K-12. We looked at that feedback that they provided, telling us about the window of VBA two and VBA three. Volusia Benchmark Assessment two is given at the end of quarter two, and that falls with the winter break. So as I already alluded to, we found dates in our calendar. The curriculum coordinators found dates that align to their curriculum map to ensure that the benchmarks that are covered are the benchmarks that are assessed in these Volusia benchmark assessments. So instead of the week prior to winter break being the first day for any assessment, they are now going to have that first, that week before winter break as a makeup window. We also addressed this in VBA three, because this was, falls at the end of quarter three, which is the week before spring break. So our week before spring break will be another makeup window, just like VBA two, we're using that last week to provide makeup time, instead of using it as a first day of testing the week before winter break and spring break. We also are responding to the school events that are being scheduled, whether that is a field trip to Washington DC or our musical performing arts awards. Those times, we're going to be flexible with our schools to ensure that they have the time on their calendars, and we have the flexibility within our windows to allow them to assess on a different day if a majority of their students are not able to be there for that day. And the last piece is that diagnostic or that baseline. We, after three years of administering these progress monitoring assessments, we have now learned that we are able to provide opportunities earlier in the year with all of our logistics to move from September ninth and at eleventh. Those were the originally scheduled days, but after those three renditions, those cycles with those teachers and those principals, they all agreed that they would prefer to see it at the beginning of the year, closer to the beginning of the year. So this is the third week of school.
And if I may, Kyle.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
And that's very important, because when you're talking about the continuity of instruction, to instruct from the beginning of the school year, right? And you go through your routines and procedures, and you begin to instruct your benchmarks. And then in September, second week of September or so, you then have to stop and give a baseline data, because that's what PM one is. It's just baseline data. That does interrupt instruction to then go back and pick up where you left off. Whereas if we do it towards the beginning of the school year, it'll be more continuous in terms of that instruction piece. So that's important to note on that part.
All right, so looking forward, we also heard common misconceptions throughout our feedback sessions, right? Between principals and our teachers. So we do have a video, again, our star, Mike Semino, our celebrity. He's going to be here with us for the common misconception video.
So there are a few misconceptions about testing, but there's one that I want to point out specifically, because we hear it a lot and we agree a hundred percent. It's the fact that a test score, it's just a number. It's just one point in time that we get, one data point about how a student performed on a set of questions that day. There's a lot more to the picture of a student. There's the group activity. There's the classwork assignment. There's the time they raise their hand to answer a question, and we're so proud of themselves that they got that question correct. Those are the moments that are important. Those are the moments that move a student's learning forward. And with the assessment, that one piece, it's needed to a degree, because that's how we're able to move and see exactly what the student knows and drive the instruction to meet the needs of each individual child. So it's not about just the one test. It's the whole picture. It's the learning in the classroom. Combined with those testing points along the way, we're able to formatively help your child achieve their best results.
Okay, so now looking forward into our next steps. We've already shared the 25, 26 testing calendar updates. Our next steps with this calendar is that we will provide it to DOE. It is in legislation that we have to provide our testing calendar to the Florida Department of Education once the board has approved it in a subsequent meeting. Our next focus, though, throughout the 25, 26 school year is to continue to involve our teachers. And so we're going to be bringing it back to our teachers. Every quarter, the same seventy-two teachers are going to be invited back to join us in conversation on what's happening right now, what's some things that you have seen happen. And when we look forward towards the next assessment, what are some opportunities that we maybe didn't think of in those conversations, right? Although we had three renditions of that cycle, maybe we should have had four. Maybe there was something else that we didn't catch, right? There's always something that we can refine, right? We need to continually look at that. And these teachers are the essential piece to that conversation, because they're the ones, seventy-two voices is pretty powerful, right? Being able to hear the different perspectives that they provide. Because if we don't have that perspective, they're just numbers on a spreadsheet to me and Mike, right? We don't know what is actually happening in the story behind those scores that we see, because there might be a way for us to maximize the services that we're providing in order to prove our learning in our classrooms. Another piece we heard within that feedback was the school's testing plans. So in order to support our schools, we're going to provide certain guardrails that will allow them to steer their determination of their testing plan. And first and foremost to that is we'll need to model that, right? By communicating clearly to our appropriate audiences. So we already post our testing calendar on our schools, our district websites, and our schools post them on their school websites. So that's going to be a piece that we'll continue to communicate via our websites with our testing calendar. We're going to be including monthly principals' meetings, agenda items, for which we will broach exactly what we just talked about with those teachers, right? Looking ahead and looking back, all right? We're going to be including it in our parent guide, which is provided through the communications office. Those monthly principals' meetings will not just be to look ahead and look back, but it'll also be to refine and share practices that schools have implemented within their sites that were effective, or maybe some cautionary tales, right? Because everybody can learn from a mistake. So those opportunities will be shared within our monthly principals' meetings if they have testing events coming up or looking forward. We are fortunate that we do have PM one, PM two, PM three, right? So every level, we are administering state assessments throughout the entire school year. So there's conversations, there's times and opportunities that we can attempt a system or put in a new system throughout the school year. Our testing coordinators also have monthly meetings, and including a best practices or a time where they can reflect and refine as a team is another opportunity that we will be expanding on next school year. We did address already our flexibility for student success and allowing our schools the opportunity to look at student small groups and provide flexibility around those calendars for those students, especially for our students who have accommodations through their IEP and ESOL plan or their 504. And my favorite piece as a former testing coordinator is the school testing team. Ensuring that our schools have a testing team, and we're not entrusting with just one person and putting all that pressure on one person. Having the administrators, your school leadership team, and the testing coordinator using teacher feedback and keeping teacher feedback, not just at our district level with our quarterly meetings with those seventy-two teachers, but within your school site, reaching out for that feedback, figuring out what was working well at your school site and ensuring that that either continues or if there was an opportunity for refinement, that you're hearing that feedback and you're using that as part of your testing team model.
So in closing the presentation, you know, it's no secret that we, every year since we have had our state assessments incorporated within our system here in the state of Florida, every year, Volusia County Schools have increased their performance. To date, we are three percent away from an A. That doesn't happen by chance. That's not because I just hope and prayed, and it just happened miraculously, right? It's very intentional with the things that we've been doing, with streamlining the supports that we provide to schools and the assessments that we also provide as a district level. When Mr. Semino talked about the reliability and validity of an assessment, that is very important. That is behind research and statistics. And I asked Mr. Semino, please don't go into the whole stats mined in this particular session, but he can really review all that stuff with you. He was geeking out yesterday as he was reviewing that with me, because there is a lot of science behind that, right? And so it's what to do and how you use those assessments that actually matter. And again, the assessments have to be aligned. I can't sit here as the chief academic officer and with the twenty-five years of experience that I have in education to think that an assessment from a textbook publishing company, it's fine, and that's what's going to give you that push that you need to accelerate, to remediate, or intervene when you need to. A publishing company is there to make money. They take, and I know this because I've worked with some, they take and they put a stamp, California versus Florida versus Mexico. When we're talking about truly aligning these assessments with reliability and validity, again, there is research behind it, but it's not just the research. It's really tapping into what questions are the ones that are good? Which ones are not? Analyzing, how are students answering this? Where are the gaps? Where are the holes in these assessments? And that iteration is what, that laser-like focus is what is keeping this district from going backwards. Okay, so if we want to see an A school district, we have to continue this and continue with the, with what both Kyle and Mike said in terms of having those steering committees to truly refine what we're doing, making sure that we have the best practices. Because as I stayed and gleaned from my brother, the chief of staff, he says, nobody wakes up to try and get it wrong, right? We always do what's best for our kids in Volusia County Schools. And so when we are inviting our testing steering committee throughout the year, that is brand new. That is not something that we have done before. This is something we've done before. However, having that bigger cross-section and then saying, but you know what? Throughout the school year, as you're going through the motions of assessing your district assessments as well as the state assessment, let's bring you back and let's see what worked and what didn't work. But let's also bring back the principals and the conversations, because school A and school B might have a different building makeup, might have a different, of course, teaching makeup and student makeup. And so there's still flexibility in how to administer, but there's still best practices that you should see throughout the district, and we want for principals to be able to share that as well. And so again, that is something that we're incorporated for this school year in addition to everything that the gentlemen here have discussed. But with that, I leave you for questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to thank you guys for a couple of things. One, the videos that were posted on social media. I saw some of those the other day, and I liked it because I know that not every parent or community member watches our school board meetings or watches our workshops, and I completely understand. And I think it was just a nice snippet to really compare the PMs to the VBA's. So I want to thank you for that. And also, I really do want to thank you for including all of those teachers from every single grade level, because everything that I know we all heard, I feel like has been addressed here. So I really do appreciate that, moving the times around. I just had one question, and it's not going to be a hard one, but it has the computer-based testing on a lot of them, but not the VBA's. So does that mean they are a paper-based test?
That's a great question. They are all computer-based tests.
Okay.
The emphasis on the calendar for computer-based tests on the state tests is not necessarily a designation that we wanted to put on our VBA's. They're all computer-based tests. Our issue with the state assessments is that some students receive accommodations. That accommodation is a paper-based assessment, so that there's some flexibility depending on the student's accommodation.
Okay, so there's the flexibility on the VBA's or the PM ones? VBA's?
Yeah, so with the VBA's as well, we do have paper-based accommodations also. We have text speech as well. So all the same accommodations that a child would get on any state assessment, they also get on our local assessments.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
I think it's a good designation that we could support in our calendar, though. Putting the CBT on the VBA's as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, ladies? Okay, so I have a couple of questions. On the assessment steering committee, were these individuals selected or did they volunteer?
These individuals were selected with their principals as showing, using data to inform their instruction. Yes, and there were some teachers that volunteered to be members, especially ones that have reached out to us before. We've invited them to join our steering committees, and as a result of this, has been very integral to our development of this testing calendar.
So was there anyone that volunteered to be on that committee that was not accepted to be on the committee?
No, ma'am.
So then that means you have a list of who all was on the committee? I'd love that list when you have time.
Have that, and before the meeting is over.
Thank you. Then you said you spent a total of seven hours with the teachers that served on that committee? So how many meetings did that encompass? Because I'm sure you didn't take them for just one whole day. You can't get all the information in one whole day, so how many meetings?
Yeah, seven meetings.
Seven meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was split up east and west. So some attended one and others didn't attend the opposite one?
Okay, all right. And I am, too, I'm very happy that you addressed some of the things that were brought up, such as, you know, testing the first day back after winter break and things like that. So I was happy for that. I'd like to go back, though, to the slide about the FLDOE legislation, where it says that a school district may not schedule more than five percent of its student's total school hours in a school year to administer statewide standardized assessments. So my question there is, are you only counting? Is your percentage based only on PM's tests for that?
No, it's the PMs for the state tests, yes, but that would also include our EOCs for all the state assessments, as well as our local assessments, our VBA's, VSTs, ACTs, PERT, WEDA, all those sides. And then our local assessments are VBA's, DIAs, VSTs, the science tests.
So is there any test that we administer that takes more than one day for a student to complete? Other than someone that has accommodations? So like just a gen ed student that has no accommodations, is there any test that they sit for for more than one day?
All of our assessments are geared, especially VBA three is geared for our preparation of our PM threes or our EOCs. So all of these assessments, Mike, if you want to get specific on those minutes for VBA three specifically, because VBA three is the largest assessment, and that would be the one that you would like to focus on, I'm sure.
Yeah, so our longest district assessment is VBA three. The recommended time is one hundred minutes for math and one hundred twenty minutes for ELA. Our VBA's typically in ELA and math are around thirty-five to thirty-eight questions. So they are a little bit shorter, honestly, than what you get with the PM three, which my daughter told me was like forty-seven questions or something. So she had quite a number of questions on that test. So they are shorter, and we also do consistently meet with teachers, and we are looking at the amount of time students are spending on each item. That's another thing that our teams are looking at, is if there's an item on the VBA that students are spending a significant amount of time, we're looking to see if we can cut some of those longer items that students are taking and replace that with a little bit of a shorter item to, again, encourage a reduced number of test time.
Okay, so when you're calculating that we are at less than two percent, are you calculating the average of every grade level in that and all of the assessments that are taken by every grade level to come up with that score? Or are you calculating it per grade level, especially? I mean, because if you look at this testing calendar, it tells you when second graders are going to test and how many tests they're going to take. It tells you sixth graders, eighth graders, ninth. tells you sixth graders, eighth graders, ninth. I know when it gets into high school, it gets a little trickier because it's based on what courses they're taking and/or if they didn't pass, like some of the EOC's, they have to go back and retake them. So how are you calculating your less than 2%?
So it's a K-12 measure. We take all the grade levels. And for tests that are not required, so an EOC, that's required, right? If I'm enrolled in the course, I have to take it. The SAT for our 11th graders, that's required. But then, like you said, there are other assessments that students opt into. And one example, that would be the PERT, which is an assessment that students can take in alignment for dual enrollment purposes. So although we have it on our calendar, those assessments that are not required for all of our students in a grade level to take are not included in that calculation.
Okay, so I'm assuming you have a copy of the calendar in front of you also, such as I have?
Yes.
All right. So I just want to, because if you're looking at 180 instructional days and you take 5% of that, that's nine days, okay? But let's just even say if we went down to 2%, well, then that's 3.6 days of instruction. And I do know that some of these tests are taking quite a period of time during the day. So if I look at just, say, second grade on your test, second grade is going to take the fast PML, the PM 1, ELA, reading and math. Then they're going to come in and take the gifted screener. So they're, we're up to two at that point. Then they're going to jump down and they are going to take the fast PM 2, reading and math. And then they are moving down to the VBA for math, the VBA for the ELA VBA, and I may have missed that one somewhere above. So I'm up to five already. Then they're going to take the fast PM 3, reading and math. And I'm up to six at that point, but I thought they were seven. But here's the thing, they're not yet at nine. But like if we pick third through fifth, they're going to take fast PML 1 for reading, fast PML 1 for math. Then they're going to jump down and take math VBA 1, ELA VBA 1, gifted screener for grade 3, let's add that in there for the third graders. Then they're going to take the math VBA 2, the ELA VBA 2. Then they're going to come in and take fast PM 2, fast PM for math, and then fast PM 2 for ELA. Then they're going to go down and take the Florida Alternative Assessment, the FFA, the FAA. And then they're going to jump down to the math VBA 3, the ELA VBA 3. And then they're going to come back in and take the fast PM 3, reading and math, no, ELA, and then math. Okay, that adds up to way more than nine days of assessments.
So how the state calculates it is a total number of minutes. So instead of thinking of instructional days, we have, we break the data down by instructional minutes. And I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's around like 55,000 instructional minutes. So I'm going to speak first on behalf of our local assessments. So VBA 1 is a 20-question test. So it typically takes about 45 minutes for students to complete that assessment. And that gives them about two to two and a half minutes per item. VBA 2 is a 30-question test. And we do earmark approximately 80 minutes for that, for a student to take that test. And then VBA 3 is more 35 to 40 questions. And let's say the high end, 120 minutes to take that. So when you're looking at, and so I'm just going to speak to the VBA 3s to start. So when you're looking at the VBA assessments, you're looking at most 120 plus 80 plus 40. So you're looking at 240 instructional minutes out of approximately the 55,000 that a student takes. So I know there are other assessments that you've mentioned as well. But again, the same metrics are used where you're looking at the overall number of instructional minutes. And that's how we calculate the overall percentages that you see on your paper in front of you. And every student takes a different number of assessments. So whereas one student may have, like an algebra student doesn't have PM 1, PM 2, PM 3 versus the student that's in eighth grade and is taking the PM 3 assessment in eighth grade, it's a little bit different depending on every student. And we do take that into account when we are designing the testing calendar to look at total number of instructional minutes that each child has to take for their assessments.
And this is something that we do provide to the Department of Education within that legislation. We have to provide that actual calculation to them, broken down by grade level with those percents for our state assessments, our district assessments, and then altogether. And that altogether is that piece that is that less than 5%.
Yes.
Okay, so based on what you just said, you're already submitting this data broken down by minutes to the state?
Yes.
Eventually, we have to. Yes, every year.
Okay. So you've already submitted it for this school year, correct?
24, 25.
I'd like that, please.
Okay.
I'd like to see that. Because see, this is the first time I've heard that it's an average and that it's minutes. Because I've been asking about this every year that I have sat here. And that was a nice way to start off about, I, listen, I do appreciate the intentionality. And you must be intentional and you must have a plan and you must stick to the plan and teach the standards, all right? But kids also need time to practice. I'm not going to step away from that, but, yes, all right. But my biggest thing here is I want to see it broken down. I've asked for this before and never received it. I want to see by grade level, how much instructional time we're losing. Because I think there may be some grade levels that were exceeding the 5%. Okay, I hear you because you're doing minutes. But then I also hear from teachers, and remember, we talked about this last time, that they were taking all day to take a test, which I thought for gen ed was not really the best thing. You would not have them sit there all day because that's when they're going to get in trouble and then they're not going to try their best and things like that. But I have one final thing other than about this. So on the PM 1, I've had several parents reach out. And so I have a question based on parent input. Say our students, because we know that the PM 1 from the state is to test all of the standards for that entire year. So we truly don't expect most students to score high on that PM 1. But say we had some students that did score high on the PM 1 at the beginning of the year, some of our brighter students. Well, what happens when they get to PM 3 and they don't score high and the teacher has no indication that they're not going to, they just, I mean, everything that they've exhibited in the classroom. So they haven't done a portfolio on these kids because they scored a four at PM 1. And they come in at PM 3 and they score a two. And one of the statements I heard is, she said, but I passed and that's all that mattered. So she didn't take her time. She didn't put forth her best effort. And that is one of the things I worry about all the time, is we reach a point where it's test after test after test after test. And even some of our brighter students just say, you know, I'm just going to market. Because, so do we have a true accurate picture of some of these kids that have done this? We don't. So the question is, because one of them happens to be a third grader. And I gave an answer without calling you. I said, well, the child needs to go to reading camp then. Because to ask a teacher to put a portfolio at this point in time together is going to be too much. But maybe it will wake the child up that when you sit down to take an assessment, you need to take it seriously and you need to, as I used to tell my students, paint a picture of everything you've learned and what you know. This is your chance to show off. And so is that accurate, that our students that have done that are going to head off to third grade reading camp this summer or second grade reading camp?
A Level 1, they would be invited and...
What about if they scored a Level 2?
A Level 2 would not require that a student needs to be invited to the reading camp.
Okay.
So just that Level 1.
Well, we got to figure out a way to get to these kids and motivate them to not Christmas tree, as I've said, and just click buttons to be finished.
Those are conversations that we have with our principals throughout the years. We have our data meetings discussing the adaptive nature of the assessment, the impacts that Christmas tree effect as well.
Yeah, well, you know, sometimes it's a competition to see who finishes first. And this can't be a competition when they sit down to do this. But I would like the data that was submitted to the state this year to show by grade level, how much time...
And just for clarity, since we are in the workshop, that within the legislation, it's posted on our website. So you can find it on our website, but I will forward to Dr. Vaia to share.
There's two things, Chair Haynes. We're going to get the names of the teachers in the steering committee. And then we're also going to email you the same thing that we emailed to the state. And I want to rest assured, we can't exceed 5% in any grade level at all. The state will put a stop to it. We would have heard from the state prior to. We have to submit everything to them, including the testing calendar that was approved. And they do go through their iterations of, is this really truly less than 5%? So we will submit that to you and the board as well.
Thank you. All right. So it is now 1:32 PM. We're only two minutes over on this one. And we are now moving on to item, there weren't a lot of questions. You were lucky.
I tried, Chair.
You were lucky because you went way over your 30-minute presentation time. But we're now moving on to item 3.01, health insurance. Dr. Balgobin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kyle Shaker and Mike Semino, along with Dr. Vaia, thank you very much for all the time that you have spent on this and for the adjustments that you've made. Now, I would like to ask Ms. Stephanie Workman, who is our executive director for human resources, along with our chief of staff, John Cash. I believe the committee is also here, but you will introduce the committee members, right, Ms. Workman?
Yes.
Okay. They are going to share with you some updates as it pertains to our health insurance.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Haynes, board members, Superintendent Balgobin. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this morning, I should say this afternoon, about our health insurance, a very important topic. So the formal presentation will be done by Ms. Workman and Jessica and Fred. But I wanted to take a moment just to speak to you as an employee as well of Volusia County School System on how important a change in health insurance is for the people. And I wanted to share a little bit of information, if I may, at this time. So how did we get here to look at losing a carrier that we've had for over 40 years in Florida healthcare and potentially moving to a different carrier in Curative? Well, it had to do with cost. Florida healthcare was estimating that the premium costs were to increase by about 20%. And that cost would be given to our employees, which was quite a lot of money to pass on to our employees. So we had to do our due diligence and seek out other alternatives. Now, why did that happen with Florida healthcare? We were paying Florida healthcare $59 million a year in premium, but they ended up billing or paying in claims about $63 million a year. So their cost ratio was about 106%. So from a business perspective, you can understand why Florida healthcare had to increase costs. So the district recognizes that healthcare costs are something that's very important. It's also important to our employees as part of our benefit package, so much so that the board back on, actually, September 24th of 2024 memorialized it in a document that you'll find in Board Docs, where during negotiations with our teachers' union, we increased the subsidy for the district to pay for our employees from $565 a month to $605 a month. And that came at no small cost. That's $3.5 million a year in recurring costs annually that this board approved last year to try to help with health insurance costs. And furthermore, it was to really make sure our employees realized a raise, which was about, an average of about 3%. Had the board not done that, many of those costs for that increased health insurance would have been absorbed by what the employees would have seen as not much of a raise. So the board did take action on that and I applaud them for that. I think that was very courageous to do. I also want to mention that there's an emotional part of this discussion. If you'll indulge me for a moment, I've been with Volusia County Schools for 34 years. I've only had Florida healthcare. I've only had one primary care doctor. So these changes are not something we take lightly. It's something that we understand that our employees have an emotional connection to their physicians. And we want to make sure that during the presentation today, that if people are able to pay close attention and go back and review this presentation after the fact, I think a lot of their questions will be answered, that they have questions or anxiety about. I want to share this, for example. In Florida healthcare, they have 167 physicians that are exclusive. What that means is there's 167 of those doctors that only work at Florida healthcare plans that are employed by Florida healthcare and they only accept Florida healthcare insurance. But Florida healthcare network has many doctors, hundreds and hundreds of doctors, that are not exclusively Florida healthcare doctors. They accept Florida healthcare. They may accept other carriers as well. So I think it's important that our employees understand that. Also, when you hear the presentation about Curative, you'll find that, well, you'll find that Florida healthcare is very central Florida located. And sometimes in our recruiting process, Ms. Workman has even seen this, we're trying to recruit employees that have children that are going to college out of state or somewhere like that. And they would ask questions about our health insurance because that's part of our package. And we'd have to share with them that those carriers are not in North Carolina. Those carriers in cover, in network are not in Arkansas or wherever it may be. They're primarily in the central Florida area. We also recognize that as we move to Curative, and you'll hear some of this in the presentation, so pardon the redundancy, I just kind of wanted to front-load a little bit of this for our people as they're listening to the presentation to maybe tune in. So Curative has a network of providers that you'll hear, I think, in the presentation. If I misspeak, they'll correct me. Of about a million doctors nationwide that are available if this were to be the carrier that we chose, which would eliminate some of those challenges that parents may have or people may have with relatives that are covering on their plan that are out of state or outside of the central Florida area. And locally, God forbid, any of us get sick or severely ill. We know how that can change your life in an instant. And so for the local piece, too, we want to make sure they understand that Curative has a strong local relationship with local hospitals, important hospitals like Advent, Halifax, Orlando Health, Mayo, Nemours, and Chans. I just wanted to make sure I publicly said that upfront, as people are thinking about their own personal set of circumstances when you guys had this very important decision to make. I will kind of end it with that, but, and I appreciate you letting me say this upfront, because this was not an easy decision. I know that Ms. Workman will share with you in just a moment, the committee members. This was a group effort by district staff, union staff. Ms. Albert and her team were intricately involved in this endeavor. And this is the package that they're bringing forth with you because they thought it was in the best interest of our employees. So I want to thank all those individuals that took the time and effort to do this. And in full transparency, I'll say Ms. Workman and I had conversations early on in this process, not about the adoption of what was going to happen, but about if we changed carriers. And I was bringing a historical perspective, my words, that there would be white noise in the system because that's a change for people and it's emotional. And we were prepared for that. And we want to make sure that our employees understand that part of the benefit package of Volusia County Schools when it comes to health insurance, we're trying to do right by you. So I appreciate you guys giving this opportunity to say that upfront.
Well, at this time, if you don't mind, I'd like to invite Jessica Scott from Brown &amp; Brown and Fred Turner from Curative to please join us at the dais. So as Mr. Cash stated, recruitment is one of our biggest efforts that comes out of HR. And many times, as we are out in other parts of the state and even throughout the country, one of the questions we get asked, of course, is what's your benefits package? And we'll, you know, roll off that we use this for life insurance, we use this for dental and vision and so forth. And then health insurance, we'll say, oh, we have Florida healthcare. Well, what's that? I have kids that are in college, even as close as Orlando. How am I going to, you know, cover them and then be able to get the care that they need even that close? So as we were thinking this through and looking at our options, we kept that in the back of our mind. Because as Volusia has changed and our employees have changed and the choices that their children have for life beyond, our district has changed, we have to change with them. So that's how we got to this point. So what does the insurance committee do? For those of you that are new to the board, I felt like we needed to kind of give you an overview as to what this committee does. So we meet monthly, basically to review our claims data. Now, most of that claims data does pertain to our medical benefit because that is our largest. You know, we have employees who take our entire benefits package. But the biggest chunk of what we do reflects that medical piece. We meet with the carriers to discuss our claims, the plan status, are we having any changes, kind of like what Mr. Cash mentioned, what does our loss ratio look like? And with those carriers, I can say that Florida healthcare has been a huge partner with us. They come to those meetings on a monthly basis, unless, of course, we are asking Dental Vision or one of those other carriers to come. We do keep it very specific. But they have been a partner throughout this process. We also develop communication plans. For those of you who have been around as long as Mr. Cash and I have, you've seen us go from Delta Dental to Solstice, back to Delta Dental. That had to be communicated very carefully because of the fact that we are similar to the situation that we're in right now. We're looking at a different network of doctors. Some may still be in network, but not all. We also, at those meetings, talk about what design changes do we want? Do we want a lower premium? Okay, if we do, what does that look like? Okay, if we do, what does that look like in terms of your out-of-pocket cost, your deductibles, your co-insurance? So when I was trying to summarize it up, I felt like this was the best way to put it, to provide and maintain an affordable and comprehensive benefits package for all employees. At the end of the day, that's what it comes back to. It's what can we offer our employees to make us one of the most competitive employers in the county? So the insurance committee members are listed on the screen. The ones that are in white, those are our view instructional and view support members. And the ones that are coded in blue are our non-bargaining. I know a year or so ago, when we were talking about health insurance, one of the questions was asked, now that we no longer have the Ask Me Bargaining Unit, do we still have members on the committee? And we have invited those members to join. We do have one that is representing that group. Those that have an asterisk beside their name, I'm going to ask to stand up because they are with us today, they are the ones that actually reviewed the ITN to determine what we're bringing forth today. So Ms. Kimberly Adkins, Vivian Ayla, Ms. Carolyn Snyder, Ms. Marlo Spillone, and of course, Ms. Albert, who has been an integral part of this process. We also, during the ITN, had Mr. Sees, our Chief Financial Officer, on the committee as well because we felt like his background and his knowledge was imperative to the decision-making. Of the members that I just mentioned, we reduced the committee down to five once we selected the direction we were going to go with the two providers. And I know Jessica's going to get into that a little bit more. Those were the five voting members. So the voting members were myself, Ms. Snyder, Ms. Spillone, Mr. Sees, and Ms. Albert. So that kind of tells you how we got here. Okay, and why are we here? As Mr. Cash mentioned, we are currently in a three-year contract with Florida healthcare. This past year, our rates were increased by about an average of 5.9%, depending on which plan you have. The renewal rates for the third year are based strictly on the loss ratio. So that's what the contract language says. First year, we get it as is. Second year, they usually give you some type of flexible rate. Third year, it is status quo. Whatever your rate is, is what the increase is. Our rate right now, and I'm not even sure it could even be higher at this point in time, was on track to be a 20% increase. So if you think about it, and your part was, you know, $1,000, you've just added $200 more onto that, guaranteed right out of the box. That led us, through many discussions at the insurance committee, to decide, instead of entering into that third-year contract, maybe we need to go out for an RFP. So we talked and loop procurement in, and they said, nope, you want to go out for an ITN, which is the intent to negotiate. The reason being is with an RFP, you get to a point, and you can only negotiate with one person. When you're in an ITN, you can negotiate with both all the way through the process. And then at the end, you make a decision. So the ITN was posted at the end of January, and they had to respond and send everything in on February 28th. You can see that we had two responses, Florida healthcare, which we, you know, expected, as well as Curative. Aetna, who, for those of you who were sitting here a few years ago, declined because they knew that they could not offer anything less than that 20%. Three years ago, when we went through this process, it came down to Aetna and Florida healthcare. So I want to put that out there, and there were a multitude of reasons that we continued with Florida healthcare. So over the last three RFP/ITNs, we've had a total of three different carriers apply. That's kind of the grasp that Florida healthcare has had on our healthcare insurance for the last 40-plus years. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica from Brown &amp; Brown to kind of walk us through what that ITN process looked like.
So through that process, there's obviously a lot of evaluation that goes on. It was, you know, overall, almost a five-month process of going back and forth between both carriers, having public meetings, interviews, and negotiations. A lot of great questions were asked of the committee to the carriers, which they had to respond, really, you know, and we'll go through the specifics of how they responded to a lot of those requests. But the things that we evaluated during the process, obviously, network, network is a huge issue with, you know, Florida healthcare having their staff doctors. So we know if you were to ever leave Florida healthcare, no matter which carrier it is, that there are going to be new doctors that have to be found. So within your population, you have about 3,000 or half the members that are seeing staff doctors. So we had to evaluate that and look at the impact and also speak to Curative about how are they going to respond to that? How are they going to find new doctors for your population? So we have Mr. Turner here, who will go into more details about that. But we obviously looked at their network and how they can respond to that, but they do have a network that's already been developed, and they are continuing to develop a network. We also looked at pharmacy. So Florida healthcare has their own pharmacy, and they also contract with Walgreens. That will be a change to Curative. Curative uses, in Florida, Publix. So they have a national pharmacy contracts as well. So if you're out of the state of Florida, there are contracts with Walgreens, CVS, and some other pharmacies, but within Florida, it's going to be through Publix. So that will be a change that we had to consider. They both have mail order options, and both carriers offer an extensive list of $0 medications for chronic conditions and various conditions. So we looked at all of that. As far as employee support, that's going to be very important. Florida healthcare has done a phenomenal job here locally, supporting your employees and your HR team, and they're a great partner here locally. So as Stephanie mentioned, they come to meetings on a monthly basis. They're always available. They have their wellness director there, their CEO, their CFO, medical director, pharmacy director. So they have a whole team that they have dedicated to Volusia schools, and they've done a remarkable job answering issues and getting on top of questions and things that the insurance committee has asked for and the employees need. So, you know, Curative has big shoes to fill there. So we had to look at, you know, how is Curative going to be able to step in if the direction is to go with Curative? So Mr. Turner will talk more about their care navigators, but this is going to be more of a concierge approach that every member will have access to that will help them with their healthcare along the term of the plan. So currently, they have about 160 staffed for that. In addition, they will be providing an onsite employee to the school board year-round. And also, they'll be providing to employees during the open enrollment period onsite as well to help with the installation of the product and to answer questions, meet with employees, those sort of things. During the process or prior to, HR did speak with references that Curative gave of their larger clients. Anything you want to share on that?
So keep in mind, as we all know, Curative is a newer company. However, they have made a huge footprint in the state of Texas. One of the companies that we talked to has a little over 4,000 employees that they insure, which isn't, you know, much different than where we are. And those employees are throughout the United States. They have them in Cincinnati, they have them in California, all over the place. And they talked about how having an insurance like this benefited those employees as they had to travel for work. So that was a huge piece. In talking with the school district, now, it's small because, you know, Texas does things on a smaller scale when it comes to their school districts. They said that they actually had an increase in the number of people who accepted the insurance because they felt like for the first time, it was something they could afford. So that was a huge piece for me to hear because, as many of you are aware, we have some employees who, they say, I can afford the insurance, I just can't afford everything that comes after, the copays, the co-insurance pieces, the out-of-pocket, the prescriptions, whatever the case may be. So that made me feel very confident that they had worked with an organization like us, even though on a much smaller scale. One thing I wanted to also mention back up where Jessica was talking about the open enrollment, that's just the two employees that they are going to have here for that. We also have an entire team of about 25 people or so that will be a traveling roadshow. And I'll get into that a little bit more, but I just wanted to insert that there.
Well, and Stephanie also brings up a good point as far as getting members to enroll on the plan. So when I look at your five-year history, I'm always looking at, you know, what is going on with your premium, where are claims coming from, how can we get control of the cost? So your stats on that, your premium is pretty much status quo as a whole when I look at that five-year period. And that is because membership has dropped about 3% to 4%. So we are seeing members drop the plan for various reasons. Maybe it is the plan design, you know, it's hard to say. But at the same time, we're watching your claims escalate. And so your inpatient claims have gone up 60% in that five-year period. Outpatient is about 40%. How do we get a better hold of these claims? And that's why we are talking to other vendors to see what their approach is going to be. But that is a great point because if this continues, we're going to continue to fight this battle of how do we get a carrier to step up and give you a great deal and keep premiums low so that your employees want to be on this plan? So another part of the evaluation, the clinics. Obviously, Florida healthcare has done a great job providing their clinics, and it's an $8 copay for various services at one place. So that can be for urgent care or primary care. They can get medications, diagnostics. It's a phenomenal benefit. No other carrier gives you that exact benefit. So Curative, because of their plan design being $0, your employees will have access to $0 urgent care, diagnostics, so similar things at no cost. However, they don't have that exact clinic model. So it will be, you know, going to other locations for those things.
And one thing I would like to add, because I believe one of you all forwarded me a question about the clinics, like where am I supposed to go? I'm used to going here on Saturday mornings and so forth. The urgent cares that are covered are all the ones that are open Saturdays, 8 to 5, Saturdays, I mean, Sundays, 8 to 10, whatever the case may be. So it opens up a network of clinics that they can use and urgent cares that they can use outside of those 7 to 7s that the extended hour clinics of Florida healthcare have.
And then gym membership, another very unique, wonderful benefit that Florida healthcare offers. They've done a great job networking with the local gyms and offering that at no cost, not only to their members with the schools, but to everybody that is employed by the school board. So that benefit is not going to be replicated at this point by Curative. Curative does offer a benefit called Class Pass. That will be on their buy-up options, their PPO or PPO Max plan. Again, Mr. Turner will talk more about that. But that is their solution right now. But if we find that a lot of members go to the base plan right now, we don't have a free gym membership option there. All members will get access to Noom, which is a weight loss, a free weight loss app. But that's not going to be needed for everybody. So, you know, that is going to be an area that we're going to have to further develop. So other factors that we evaluated, obviously, premium is a huge part of this. And, you know, what is going to be the impact to both your individuals on the plan and your dependents? So we looked at all of that. We also looked at your tier structure. Is it better to go back to a four-tier structure or keep the five-tier structure that we just moved to last year? And just to remind everybody, the five-tier structure just broke out that if somebody is enrolled with just one employee versus, I mean, sorry, one employee with one child versus multiple children, those with multiple children will pay a higher premium. So we broke that out last year. So we continue to evaluate that, and does it make sense to go back to four-tier or keep five-tier? We also looked at the three-year term with each vendor. So what is that going to look like? What kind of rate caps can they give us for that period of time? Also, funds that they offer. So currently, Florida healthcare gives funds towards wellness and also technology. So we wanted to make sure that was going to be the case with Curative. And then surplus contracts. So this is what Florida healthcare has in place now, that if your claims run favorably, you basically get to share in any profits. And so in the past, you have been, the school board has received a check back from them for the good claim years that you have had. So we wanted to make sure that would continue. So next, we have kind of the progression, and I broke it out just so you can see the impact to, on the base plan for the employee-only, kind of where we started with both vendors, keeping in mind that the board contribution right now is 605. And we, you know, wanted to, if that were to continue, we wanted to make sure we eventually got to where we would still have a free plan in place for employees. And so as you can see here through the various negotiation periods, Florida healthcare ended up just over that at 620, 662 for employee-only on their base plan, and Curative did end up at the 605 board contribution. So going into where we kind of ended up with both vendor. For Florida healthcare's final offer, they did listen quite a bit about the need to scale back on deductibles and offer more free services so that employees have the ability to really engage in their preventative screenings, get things done early so we don't have high-cost claimants. So in response to that, they were able to make some adjustments to the plan designs that are in place, offering $0 for their staff FHC providers for primary care and specialists, pediatricians, behavioral health, telemedicine, and generic medications.
Can I insert something right there? That's the 167 doctors that Mr. Cash mentioned earlier. It's only that group, so I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Right. And then also, they made some adjustments to the copays on some of the plan designs where it did offer some lower copays if employees go to lower-cost places for services. We've been asking for that. We made some modifications last year with Florida healthcare on that. But we want to continue to try to drive employees to the lower-cost locations. That's going to help your claims experience and, you know, hopefully overall, give you a sustainable plan. And then Florida healthcare did continue on their pro-share arrangement. That's where you get money back if your claims run favorably. They give you 100% of the reimbursement on that. They offered rate caps for year one at 9.9%. Year two, they could not because they're filed as an HMO. So that's why they've been tying it to loss ratio in the past and not just giving a flat cap. So that's how they responded there. And then funds annually, they are giving $250,000 towards wellness and $100,000 towards technology for each year.
This next slide is just a quick summation of the different plans and the different tiers, just so you could kind of get a visual of if I had to utilize my plan to 100%. And you can see that the HMO too, which is what, up until this plan design, has been our free plan, you can see that that even next year is going to be somewhere around $9,000 that they would be out of pocket. So I just, I wanted to put that out there because everybody always talks about what's that bottom line.
So for Curative's final offer, they did offer plan enhancements as well. So when they first responded to the ITN, it was looking at both level-funded plans and fully insured plans. So we ended up moving towards their level-funded plans as the recommendation. And that really is mainly because they are able to offer what we call a value plan for the base plan. I'm going to let Mr. Turner get into how that plan works, but that's all going back to the education that the insurance committee has been asking for and steerage towards lower-cost options to help your plan. This plan is designed to do just that as your base plan. And then for the level-funded option, there's a surplus, just like what Florida healthcare is doing, and they would be at 75% for year one and 75% for year two. For rate caps, they're at 9.5%. For rate caps, they're at 9.5% for year one and then 13% for year two. And then for funding, Wellness Fund, they're at 200,000. And they're calling it an optional fund. It can be used for technology or something else, but that's at 150,000.
And this slide also shows the comparison to what I had on the last slide for Florida Healthcare. And you can see that with that EPO value plan that, that Jessica mentioned, it's 100% free. There's no out-of-pocket costs for any visits, for any copays, anything like that. So we are able to offer something where an employee can get themselves taken care of at $0. The other thing I wanted to mention, since we're talking about premiums and what that's going to look like, I know we've had some questions about the fact that yes, these premiums are a little bit higher than what we're looking at right now. But in the end, you pay the premium and nothing else. One of the options that we are going to offer employees right now, for those of you that have been here as long as I have, it's always been 20, 20 deductions. That's how your deductions for your premiums are, are taken out for your different carriers that you have for your different services. We are going to offer the option to our employees. So yes, mine may be going up a little bit, but they're going to let me spread that out over 24 checks versus 20. So, so we hear the, the concern about the increase. So we, we've tried to come up with a solution where we can combat that from the get-go.
So we ended up with the unanimous decision to recommend Curative through this process. And some of the reasons behind that is that their final offer allowed employees to continue to have a free plan for premium. So, and overall, Curative's base plan was lower in premiums versus Florida Healthcare's base plans across the board for dependents and employee. So, you know, this also allows employees that are buying up currently for, you know, paying more to buy up for the other Florida Healthcare plans because of network. They want a bigger network. They want a better plan design. They're not necessarily going to have to do that with Curative because they're going to get the same plan design across the board and they're going to get a national network across the board. So that could allow employees to not have to buy up. They can really sign up on the base plan and get that free premium. And as long as they do the baseline visit, which Mr. Turner will get into, they will have zero, zero copays on their plan design. So, you know, with that, that helps. So there's no cost barrier to receiving care. We hope, you know, that ultimately reduces your high-cost claimants, your outpatient, inpatient activity. We're trying to catch things earlier. And then, as we mentioned, they're going to have a concierge service through their care navigators. So again, that's going to help with members to make sure they are getting their preventative screenings done. If they have a chronic condition, that's going to help them to be on top of managing that, getting the care that they need, taking the medications they should be taking. And then, you know, a big thing is this is going to help members try to find new doctors, that need to find new doctors. They're going to be there to walk them through that process. And then, as I mentioned, there is a national network on all plans. So as mentioned before, you know, for employees that have kids in college, retirees that travel outside of the state, they are going to have coverage through these plans outside of Florida. Same with pharmacy. They'll have national pharmacy plans as well. And then this plan is going to give what we call a zero card option. Again, Curative is going to talk about what that means. But that is to also help minimize disruption with providers. So as Stephanie mentioned as well, they're going to be reaching out to the non-staff providers to try to work on getting them in their network ahead of time. But for whatever reason, if they can't initially contract with a provider, this is going to be another approach that they can take so that members can continue to see their doctor outside of the Florida Healthcare staff doctors. So, and this is going to help with their ability to continue to build a local network here.
And one thing I want to add before we turn it over to Mr. Turner to give us the meat and potatoes of today's presentation is that we did ask as part of the negotiating process, if Florida Healthcare, if they were not selected as our provider, would they be willing to become a part of the Curative network? So that we did not have the disruption of, of services for those who have those true Florida Healthcare doctors. And unfortunately, they would not. We also asked them about contracting with the pharmacy because that was another thing that we heard. We really like the pharmacy that Florida Healthcare has. And again, they told us they would not. So I think it's important that everyone is aware that, that we've asked those questions to try to keep as much unchanged as possible. So Mr. Turner, the man of the hour.
All right. Thank you for having me here to share a little bit more about Curative and what we do.
Yep, I can, there we go.
All right. So I'll start with a little bit of an introduction to Curative because we are a newer company to the space, if you go to the next slide. We were founded in January of 2020. We actually initially got started trying to improve sepsis outcomes in hospitals. And then the COVID pandemic hit and shut down all of the hospitals. And the team had a background in lab testing. So we thought, yeah, maybe we can help out with the pandemic for a few weeks until this all blows over. Obviously lasted a little bit longer than that. We ended up scaling the company from seven to 7,000 employees over the next 12 months. We built out national testing sites all across the country. Here in Florida, we tested all of the staff and residents at every nursing home in the state, every assisted living facility in the state. In total, we did about 10% of all US COVID testing. So we do know how to do healthcare at scale. We know how to scale up. We know how to hire great people and maintain the quality as we do so. So obviously, COVID testing, very short-term need, not a long-term need. So from 2020, we started to focus on what comes next. And one of the unique problems that we had is we were a large employer with 7,000 employees trying to provide great benefits for our people, particularly with two British co-founders of the company who grew up with a slightly different healthcare system, both being in the US a very long time. We could not find something that we were happy and excited to offer to our people. Everything we looked at was chasing a short-term gain at the expense of longer-term cost increases by putting people off getting the care they need to save money in the short term. And so we thought we could build something better. So we got started in 2022. We've been growing rapidly ever since, if you go to the next slide. We're now about 110,000 members nationally on the plan. Coming up now in about 800 groups. We do have a sizable number of school districts, primarily in Texas at this point, that are on the Curative plan. And we're seeing great results so far. So you go to the next slide. So we really think one of the most significant things that is driving cost increases and negative health outcomes in the current system is the out-of-pocket costs that members face to get necessary care. Even when members have that insurance, the out-of-pocket cost they face puts them off actually seeking that care. So this here is the result of a survey that we ran. These are currently people in the state of Florida who get their healthcare from their employer, who answered these questions. So none of this is people on a Medicaid plan or exchange plan. These are people on employer-sponsored healthcare. And despite that, 55% of people wouldn't actually be able to afford to pay the necessary out-of-pocket cost if they had a major medical condition or needed some kind of emergency care. And this drives this pattern of care deferral. So 35% of people had actively skipped care in just the last 12 months. 59% of people had actively skipped preventative care. So the stuff you most want people to do is what they're most likely to put off. The statistic that didn't make it on the slide that most shocked me is that 10% of people answered they have cut their medication in half in the last 12 months because of the out-of-pocket cost. Again, this is on an employer-sponsored plan. This is the gold standard of US healthcare and 10% of people are cutting bills in half. That's going to save money in the short term because you didn't pay for that medication. But long-term, that is not the right solution to manage down long-term cost. Next slide. There's quite a lot of data out there on the long-term consequences of these out-of-pocket costs. This is a study done by the National Bureau of Economic Research. They followed a group of about 50,000 members that moved from basically no out-of-pocket cost to a high deductible plan. And they followed them for three years to see what happens. And in the first year, they saw a 12% reduction in claims cost. So it looks like, okay, great, we solved all the problems. People must be price shopping. They must be only going to see the highest value care. They must be avoiding unnecessary things. Unfortunately, when you dig in and you look at what's happening, your hospital costs stay flat. Your specialty medication costs still increased. And all of that 12% saving came from people skipping preventative care. So in that first year, even though colonoscopies would have been covered at $0 out-of-pocket as a preventative service, they still went down by a third. Because people don't understand their benefits. They don't read the full benefit booklet. Insurance is complicated. You tell them, hey, you have an out-of-pocket cost. No matter how small it is, that financial barrier puts people off seeking care. And you can see that increasing the rate of late-stage colon cancer by the third year. So this stuff catches up with you really fast. You end up paying a lot more for it in those later years than you would have paid to deal with that upfront. So this is the problem that we're trying to address with the Curative plan. It's a very unique model. Basically, all of our members start out the plan year with $0 out-of-pocket. So no copays, no deductible, no coinsurance. As long as you stay in-network, and was already mentioned, it is a million providers nationwide. I'll say more about that later. But all of that in-network care is $0 out-of-pocket. So you can go see your PCP for $0. You can have a baby for $0. You can get cancer care for $0. And everybody gets that for the first 120 days on the plan. During that 120-day window, members have to complete something that we call the baseline visit. It's basically a mix between an onboarding to the plan and a preventative health visit. You do it with our team. It's virtual, so it's usually a 45-minute to an hour-long Zoom call. And as long as you show up and do that visit, then you'll continue having the no-out-of-pocket cost for the rest of the plan year. So just 45 minutes to an hour-long Zoom call and everything could be free. If you do not show up, if you won't give us one hour of your time once a year to think about your own preventative health on that 121st day, you will revert back to a $5,000 deductible, 20% coinsurance, and copays on most services. So it's a big financial carrot and stick to get people to engage. Once a year, let's get you engaged. Let's make sure that you're getting the care you should be getting upfront and ahead of time. And we do find that most people for $5,000 do engage. We get 98% nationally of our members who engage and complete that baseline visit. So most people do do that and get that $0 out-of-pocket. Here's the next slide. So we do find we have to show people the benefits grid or they don't believe it. It is really all zeros on the left. That is the happy path. For 98% of our members, if you do your baseline visit, it is everything at that $0 out-of-pocket. If you don't do your baseline visit, that is this middle column here with that $5,000 deductible. Again, that is only 2% of our members who ever end up there. There is an out-of-network benefit as well. I'll talk a little more about this on the plan options. This is showing our standard PPO plan, which is one of the middle-tier plans. That does have a out-of-network benefit, but it is at a $10,000 deductible if you do go out of network. So if you go to the next slide. So I'll come back in a little bit and talk more about the baseline visit and how that works and how we actually drive the cost savings to pay for this. But first, let me touch on the four plan options that we are putting forward, particularly the EPO value plan, which, as was discussed, this is one of the ways that we can drive substantial cost savings. So we are offering these four different options of plan. Now, in-network, it is all $0 out-of-pocket with the baseline visit. So the usual thing that you would vary between plans, right, is that cost share, but that is always zero. We want people to engage proactively. We want them to go and get care. So we don't want that financial barrier to be a reason they don't do that. So primarily, we vary the out-of-network benefit. We vary the pharmacy network. And then on the EPO value plan, there is a steerage component. So let me explain how that works. On the EPO value plan, when you're seeking new care, you reach out to us through your care navigator or through our online tools and say, I am looking for X. I'm looking for an MRI. I'm looking to see a dermatologist. And we will give you five options for that, who you can go to. And that way that is determined is based on a mix of cost and the quality of those providers. It's also ranked based on distance. So if there is somebody who is closer to you, but they're slightly more expensive, we will still rank them higher because we want people to be able to access them easily. And so we do all of that computation on the backend. We make that list of recommendations. And then as long as you go to one of those recommendations, it's going to be $0 out-of-pocket.
What if I don't like those recommendations?
If you don't like those recommendations, you can come back to us either via your care navigator or via the online portals and say, I don't like any of these five, and we'll give you another five. If you don't like any of those five, on the EPO value plan, you can always go to any provider in our full million provider network. But if you ignore our recommendations, then you would be subject to the deductible as if you hadn't done the baseline visit. So you will always have them available. If you go, if you want to go see one of those other providers, you always can. And that $5,000 deductible, I believe, is still actually less than the current deductible on the HMO two plan.
Okay, so an additional question on that. If I do choose to go to an out-of-network or non-recommended doctor, does that $5,000 deductible just apply to seeing that doctor? And everybody else is still zero, or do I then move to?
Everybody else would still be zero. So if you choose to go see one out-of-network provider, it doesn't affect all the rest of your care. You can still access all of those through those recommendations at zero. The main difference there to our EPO plan is if you don't want to go through that process of coming to us for a recommendation every time, you want to just be able to go wherever you want within our network, that's what you can do on the EPO plan. So if you pick that buy-up option to the EPO, you don't have to come through us for that recommendation. Everything within that network would be at zero. PPO plan is the next buy-up option. That starts to include out-of-network coverage. So these are providers that are not in our network at all. You could go to see those providers, but again, that would have the $10,000 out-of-network deductible. We do also include the ClassPass gym membership on that PPO plan, as well as on the PPO Max plan that was mentioned earlier. They have a national network of about 25,000 gyms and fitness locations. We provide 25 credits a month. You can go to and use it, Polaris Gym, all sorts of different locations. And then we have the PPO Max plan. This is basically, if you want to go absolutely anywhere, this is the buy-up option. It extends that $0 out-of-pocket to the out-of-network as well. So $0 out-of-pocket in or out-of-network for any provider. That PPO Max option also extends the pharmacy network. So as was mentioned earlier, our standard pharmacy network is Publix. Here in Florida, we do also have the Curative Pharmacy that does free next-day delivery. It's based in Tampa, so it's very close by. We can get medications next day and we will deliver everything. It's not your typical specialty mail order. We'll deliver a $2 antibiotic. We'll deliver a $3 ointment, whatever it is, we can ship it to you next day. Outside of that, you'd have the Publix option. We do deliberately exclude CVS and Walgreens because we find on average, they're about 8% more expensive for exactly the same medication. So if you have somebody who desperately wants to go on that Walgreens, we do offer that PPO Max plan option, the highest-tier buy-up. That does include CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Rite Aid, as well as the Publix and the Curative Pharmacy. But since those drugs cost more for exactly the same thing, that is that more expensive plan option. Questions on that?
I think so.
All right.
For now, they may have some.
So coming back to the baseline visit, this is usually where people ask, what is the catch? How can so much of the care be available at zero? This is really where the baseline visit comes in. So again, all of our members, in order to access that $0 out-of-pocket, must go through the baseline visit. It is all adult members on the plan. So dependents, if they're over the age of 18, must also do their own baseline visit. It is every year and you have to get it done within that 120-day window. Now, we make it super easy. We have evening and weekend appointment slots. We have them available in English and Spanish with our staff and 210 other languages and ASL through a translation service. We want everybody to get the baseline visit done. We don't want to catch anybody out. We want 100% completion. That is our goal. We reach out to members super proactively before the 120 days is up. You're going to hear from us by text, by call, by email, by postcard. We want to get everybody through that baseline visit. So what does it actually entail? It's split into two parts. The first 30 minutes is with your care navigator. So as was mentioned earlier, everybody on the Curative plan gets assigned a care navigator. They are basically your personal concierge, your point of contact. You can reach out to them by text, by email, by call, and they are there to help guide you through the healthcare system. So if you need help scheduling an appointment to see a provider, they will sit on the phone and help make that appointment for you. They will call up and make it on your behalf. You need help transferring your prescription, they can help you with that. If you need help with a prior authorization and getting that done and on file, they can help guide you through that. So they are your personal point of contact. They're always available to you. And for the first 30 minutes of that baseline visit, they onboard you to the plan. So they will go over with a member, what is a copay? What is a deductible? What does a network mean? Because we find a substantial portion of members don't understand the basic words, you know, of health. words, you know, of healthcare. It's gotten so complicated, you have to do that basic health literacy education to really get people to engage. So we found it's not enough just to remove the cost barriers of why people don't engage in the preventative care. You also really have to remove that fear of cost. If they think it might cost them something to go get that preventative visit, that's one more reason why people don't engage, don't get that checkup, don't get that screening done. And so the Care Navigator will go through, look up any providers they're seeing now, show them how to use the search tool and find them. If they're in-network, great. Need help setting up an appointment. If they're not in-network, let's help get them nominated so you can keep seeing them on the Zero Card. Are you taking any medication? Let's check that it's on the formulary. If it is, great. If not, let's find you the recommended alternative, or let's get an exception request put in. And so the member really comes out of that, understanding how their plan works, knowing how to get care, knowing where to go to get care, and being set up for success for the rest of the year. It also helps to develop that relationship with the Care Navigator. So if something comes up during the year, "I need this type of care. I'm trying to find this provider." You have that relationship with your Care Navigator. They save their number in your phone. So if we need to reach out to you, my phone rings, it says Kyra. It doesn't say 1-800-CURATIVE. You have that established relationship where we can reach out, make recommendations, and you can reach out to us, and you start to build that trust with the health plan. So that's the Care Navigator portion.
What if my Care Navigator's not available?
So if you call us at 3:00 in the morning and your Care Navigator is not available, it will call through to our member services line. That is 24/7/365. It's 100% US-based, W2 Curative employees, and we will always pick up the phone day or night. The average wait time is less than a minute. And so if your Care Navigator isn't available, then it will call straight through to that member services number, and someone will be able to help you. The primary difference there is that, obviously, they're not going to know your specific details, whereas your Care Navigator is going to have, you know, top of mind, more familiarity with your specific situation. But the Care Navigator would then follow up the following day based on the notes from the member services. You're always going to have that available day or night. And we do have people call us at 3:00 AM on Christmas Day. So that is always there. So the Care Navigator portion of the baseline visit, that is then followed by the clinical. So this is 30 minutes with either an MD or a nurse practitioner. And really, what we're focused on is finding gaps in care. So if you're seeing your PCP every year, getting your blood work done, everything looks good, we're going to make sure that you're aware of the various programs that we offer, but we're largely going to leave you alone. We're not trying to disrupt any existing care. We want people to be able to continue accessing care. And so what we find, though, is a lot of people who come through and maybe haven't seen a doctor in five years, 10 years, maybe they, you know, saw somebody a few years ago, and they recommended a medication. They took it for a while, but it was costing $10 a month. And so, yeah, I feel fine. I don't need to take this now. And that is too often the approach that we see people take. Those are the members who will eventually end up in the emergency room, in the hospital, on a specialty medication, where that is so preventable. All of those conditions, if you can get ahead of it, if you can get that member into care early, you can save that long-term unnecessary spend and also get a much better health outcome for that member. And so our team will sit down with that member and say, "Look, we need to get you in with a PCP. It'll be $0. We'll make the appointment. All you have to do is show up. They're probably going to prescribe you this medication. It'll be $0. And by the way, we'll deliver it to your house for free next day. All you got to do is take it." Even with all of that, there's always someone who doesn't engage, right? You're never going to get everybody, but it's not about getting everybody. What this approach allows us to do is to get all of those basics covered with a much larger portion of the population. We get through all of the basics, the screenings, the things that we know work for preventative care, and we get that done for 98% of the members. They may not all follow those recommendations perfectly, but they follow them much better than if you didn't reach out and didn't do that proactive approach. And this is then followed up with the Care Navigator reaching out to that member throughout the plan year, saying, "Hey, you know, we talked at the baseline visit about that colonoscopy. I see that it hasn't happened yet. Can we get that set up? Can we make that happen?" And so through all of this proactive outreach, we're able to get members to engage in their care early, get them to do those preventive things, and ultimately keep them out of the hospital, keep them out of the emergency room, and keep down the long-term cost for the plan. Yeah, so we find the members really love it. They engage with this. Again, 98% of Curative members do complete the baseline visit. Of the people who don't, it tends to be either college-age dependents who ignore their parents no matter what, or it is people who are already interviewing somewhere else and not planning to be engaged. But 98% of our members do complete that baseline visit, and they rate it very highly. We get a net promoter score of 78. That means at least 78% of people gave us a 9 or 10 out of 10 on their experience. So members have a very positive experience doing this baseline visit. And we are able to identify 94% of all chronic conditions from this baseline visit. And that allows us to do extensive follow-up with those members, get them to engage in the right kind of follow-up care. So you go to the next slide. I go through all the various programs and how all that works, but I don't think we have time to get into everything today. So to show the end result, this is the Curative hospitalization data as compared to a Milliman Benchmark. So the Milliman Benchmarks, they're a large actuarial consulting firm, put out these three benchmarks. Poorly managed is the red line. Moderately managed, kind of your national average, is the yellow line. The green line is well-managed. That's the aspirational goal for health plans. Curative is the blue line. So when members join our plan, we do all this preventative proactive care, we are able to cut their hospitalization rate by close to 30%. We see this across the board, across different types of groups. Doing this upfront, getting members to engage, we can avoid a large number of those preventable hospitalizations. This is it in terms of admits, and we see the same trend as well in terms of bed days per 1,000 members. So all of this adds up and works at actually decreasing those long-term costs. I think one of the things we really try and focus on with the program is building that sustainable long-term cost structure, where you're not seeing those large spikes, those high-cost claims that drive up premiums year after year, but actually investing now in keeping the population healthy for the long term. Network was mentioned quite a few times. We do have a broad national network. It is about a million providers nationwide. That is a mix of direct agreements that we hold ourselves as Curative, and also something called the First Health Network. It is basically all major health systems that participate in that. We want people to go get care early. The whole model is built around prevention, so we want people to be able to get access. So the network is never, should never be an impediment to that. We want you to be able to keep getting the care that you're already accessing. We also offer Curative Telehealth. So this is through the member portal. Members log on, click a button, and you can be speaking to a doctor in just a few minutes. This is a really great way of getting members instant access to care, keeping them out of the emergency room, and making it accessible. This is 24/7/365. It is available in all 50 states. So members can immediately get that access and take care of those basic things without generating an urgent care or an ER visit. As was mentioned earlier, we do also offer something called the Zero Card. This is very unique to Curative. So as well as getting your member ID card, all Curative members also get something called the Zero Card. It is a Visa credit card issued in your name but fully funded by us. And this will work at any in-network provider. So anything that shows up on our search tool, the Zero Card will work. It won't work out-of-network. It won't work at Chick-fil-A, which, for some reason, is the biggest place people try to misuse it. But it will work at any in-network provider. And this provides basically two things. The first is a guarantee of access. We are newer in the market. From time to time, some of the smaller providers may say, "Oh, I haven't heard of this Curative thing." Almost certainly, they do have a contract, or they have a contract via First Health, but they all know that they take Visa. And so no matter what, if you're ever in a situation where the provider's saying, "I don't know," you can say, "Okay, I'll pay the cash price. Here's my Zero Card." And what we find is the cash price is actually often cheaper than the price that they will negotiate with insurance companies. So this long-term saves the district money as well. So you have that guarantee of access no matter where you are. Now, the other thing this allows us to do is to continue to expand that network beyond what's possible with a traditional insurance carrier. So if you nominate a provider to join our network, which you can do either by texting your Care Navigator, there's a 45-second to fill out a form on our website. If you nominate a provider, we will try to contract with them, but that's something that can take a long time. It can take three to six months. In the meantime, we'll give you an answer within five days of whether you can immediately go see that provider using your Zero Card. We accept 94% of those nominations. Once it's accepted, it'll show up in the search tool. So once one person nominates them, anybody can go there with a Zero Card. And so you're not waiting for that contracting process. You can immediately continue getting that care. The other place we've seen this be very valuable is providers that don't take any insurance. So particularly in the mental health side, there are a lot of providers that just don't take any insurance coverage. They're cash-pay-only. We allow members to keep accessing those providers using their Zero Card. So on the mental health side, that gives us by far the largest network of any carrier out there because we have all of those cash-pay-only providers in that network. So there is also full tooling available, as well as that Care Navigator, who you can text, call, or email. There are self-service tools. We have a member portal. It's available online and on your cell phone. You can get your member card through the portal. You can get your Zero Card and add it to your Apple Wallet. So it's all very tech-friendly and very accessible. Anybody with a cell phone can get it to our tools. Go to the next slide. There's some screenshots just kind of showing how this works. That's the map of providers. So you can go on there. It's all mobile-friendly. You can look up a provider. You can look up any medication, and that's all available from a phone.
That's Deland, by the way, the map he has up there.
Yes, yeah, it might be too small to recognize. We also offer a pretty large number of programs that come, again, at $0, fully included for members. Nume was mentioned already. That's a great tool for anybody with weight-loss goals to use. But one thing I really want to highlight here that we offer is the Gallery Test. This is something from a company called Grail. It's something called a multi-cancer early detection. So basically, from a single tube of blood, they can detect up to 50 different types of cancer at stage one or stage two that usually you wouldn't detect with symptoms until stage three or stage four. So these are things like your pancreatic cancer, your lung cancer, the difficult-to-catch ones, where usually they end up being caught too late, and there's nothing you can do about it. If we can catch those at stage one or stage two, the outcomes there are significantly better. Often, it's treatable or curable. The other thing is for the district, the cost difference between treating a stage-one and stage-two cancer and a stage-three and stage-four cancer is about 8 to 10 times X. Right? So you're potentially at the stage-one or stage-two cancer, $40,000 surgery versus at that stage-three or stage-four, $400, $500, $600,000 of claims, and you're not getting as good an outcome for it. So we want to catch these early. We want to find them as early as possible. We offer this test for anybody over the age of 50. It's fully covered at zero. You can get it every year. It's something that we push heavily during the baseline visit. We are, I believe, the only carrier in the country providing this broad level of coverage for this test. And again, I think it shows our commitment to actually trying to drive prevention upfront and keep down those long-term costs. This does increase your cost in the first year because you find those stage-one or stage-two cancers that usually you wouldn't know about them. They wouldn't show up until next year as a stage-three or stage-four cancer. So we want to invest, spend that money now on treating them when they're actually curable, and avoid those claims next year. Because your high-cost claimants, your high-cost cancer claimants next year, they're already on the plan today as a stage-one or stage-two cancer. If we can deal with that now in a preventative manner, that's going to get much better outcomes for the employees and save money long-term for the district. So we're really excited about this test. It's one of the things we really love doing. Sorry, cut you off.
Well, and to that point, for the district's employees, when I look at claims, 24 out of your 50 high-cost claimants are cancer. So this is very, very...
On the drug side, we also, as I say, have a unique approach, but we are able to get members their medications at $0 out-of-pocket. So we have our own custom formulary where for any condition you might have, there's always going to be a $0 option. So if the only drug available is a very expensive specialty medication, there's going to be a prior auth, you're going to have to meet the criteria. Assuming you do, it would then be $0. We don't think it's helpful to charge $100 a month for that expensive medication. All it does is put members off taking it. It doesn't help pay for that $500,000 medication. Just increases the chance to end up in the hospital, and you're paying for the hospital and the drug. So we think that's counterproductive. However, if there are conditions where there are many different options available, there's a generic, and there's a brand-name drug, we will have picked that lower-cost option, and that is what will be available at zero. And if you want that brand when the generic is available, it would be at either a $50 or a $250 copay. But again, there's always that $0 option. If you try the generic and it doesn't work for you, you can submit that. And if it's for a genuine medical reason that you can't take that generic, we would then cover the brand at zero. It has to be a real medical reason, but we want everybody to be able to get their medication at zero. So 98% of drug fills on the plan do happen at $0. That includes a lot of specialty medications that, right now, people would be spending a lot out-of-pocket on. They will be able to get on the Curative Plan at $0. And we also see really great medication adherence numbers, so 90% for all the chronic conditions. Again, it's not rocket science, but if you don't charge people a fee to take their life-saving medications, they are more likely to take them. And long-term, this really helps keep people out of the hospital. This really helps keep those costs down as you manage the plan. So as I said, we really want to be a long-term partner for sustainability. I think we've shown this through the rate caps that we've given. So there will be locked-in known costs for the first at least three years. You know what this is going to cost. And through all of the work we're doing through the prevention, through the baseline visit, we're able to manage down that long-term trend. Go to the next slide. So we do have data on groups that have been with us now for over two years. This is the first cohort of groups that joined Curative back in 2023. What we see is, as I mentioned earlier, at the beginning, there is a slight uptick in spend. There's all the pent-up demand. There's the things that people kind of know they should have been doing. They've been putting it off, the care that they should have gotten and haven't gotten. They go deal with that, and it happens pretty quickly within the first six months. But that quickly subsides, and that investment in keeping people healthy leads to lower costs in that second year. So this cohort spent over $100 per member from monthless in the second year than the first year. Usually, medical trend is a number that people will tell you will always go up and to the right, but through that proactive management, we've been able to actually keep that trend at bay and manage costs down over time. Members love the experience. Again, net promoter score of 78. We have all these stories of members who were choosing between getting a surgery or repairing their roof, or they're choosing between, you know, putting food on the table and a medication. And those are not the choices that we want people to make. It ends up driving, again, more cost long-term. And so being able to provide that $0 out-of-pocket for members, we've seen this be an incredible tool for recruitment and for retaining employees to have such a rich benefit. And we are, obviously, we know we are a newer company in the market, so we know this is important. We are A-minus rated by A.M. Best. We just had this reaffirmed for the third year. So we do have the financial stability to be around for the long term. And yeah, we are excited to answer any questions.
One more thing we want to cover real quick, and then we'll be ready. So the last thing we want to talk about is the impact to the open enrollment timeline. So tomorrow, if you approve this tonight, there will be an email that will go out to all staff that will have an overview video from Curative, a Q&amp;A document, and how to engage with a Care Navigator, which will be a HIPAA release form. Because technically, if the contract is approved, we do not go into contract with them until October 1st. However, they're willing to work with us starting tomorrow forward to start moving our employees over, get making sure those doctors are in place, going ahead and having those Care Navigators assigned immediately. So very proactive, really five months before this goes into effect. The open enrollment meetings will be July 21st through August 15th, and I'll talk about those more a little bit. The other piece, too, is that they will start engaging with those who are currently in treatment. So we do, I know Jessica has mentioned that we have a lot of employees who are currently seeking cancer treatment and treatment for other high-cost-type issues. They will go ahead and start working with them to help transition them over as needed. They will also start working on the reaching out to current non-staff providers. So for example, I looked up my doctors. Two of my three doctors are already in the Curative network. My third one, they could reach out to, go ahead and have that in place. So come October 1st, when I need to go for my annual physical, the person's already in the network. So open enrollment. One of the things that we have changed in the last couple of years with open enrollment is that it has gone from basically a very short timeline to an entire month. With that timeframe, what we are doing this year, instead of just having an East Side/West Side one-night type thing where you can come and get help, we are going to have a roadshow. And the roadshow is going to start here in Deland and then conclude on August 14th in DeLeon Springs, as well as a second one here in Deland. Because we want to make sure that we take this team that we're talking about for registration out to our employees. They will be at school or district sites, and it won't just be like a four-to-six type thing. We'll be there from like 9:30 to 6:30, or 12 to 8:00, or whatever, so that if you work morning shift, evening shift, overnight shift, we have something available for you to come and get the assistance that you need. So the, I know, I believe, yep, the benefits team, they all snuck back down in just a few minutes ago, but they're ready. They're ready to start with this as soon as we're given approval. So with that, we are available for any questions you may have.
This is Goodrich.
All right. So you said you have over a million providers nationwide. How many of those... How many of those are in Florida?
I don't know the exact number in Florida. I can get at you on that.
Okay. And of the 427 primary care physicians that are in Network, are those in Volusia County? Or where is that number of the 427 that are in Network that are accepting new patients?
County, yes.
Volusia County, all right. What's Curative's largest client? How many employees?
Reference that we provided is their current largest client.
Okay. So we would possibly be 6% to 8% of your revenue?
Yes.
Wanted about the gym membership, but I don't use our healthcare anyway, so. But I think that's a miss.
We have been looking at and having some conversations with the local gyms and starting that up again. We just didn't want to promise in case we're not able to make that deal happen, but we are actively working on that.
And something I'd like to add, too, is we are looking at using some of the wellness funds, if we have to, to offer something as well, to go into contract possibly with the Y, which is also one of the companies that Jessica works with. So we're looking at partnerships, but honestly, that's not something we can move on until we know that this is going to be the direction we head. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mrs. Brosmer.
I first want to thank the committee because my impression is that you've all done a really thorough job investigating all of this, and the time you've spent on it in so much detail. And a lot of your, a lot of this information answered many of the questions that I had. But I think my biggest concern is that you know it, and now we know it, but the people who are most directly affected don't know it. Do I understand correctly that First Health Network is affiliated with Aetna?
A subsidiary of Aetna, yes.
Okay. And so opening up, so using Curative allows access to effectively Aetna's network of providers?
Not identical to the Aetna network, but it is similar.
How similar? And I realize that's a really weird question, so it's, I know it's hard to answer. But in full disclosure, I'm retired. We have private insurance because my husband is a chronic cancer patient. And so we, the district is actually ahead of the game with us because we don't, we don't use the district's insurance. But I'm thinking of it in terms of if we did, and what I would have to do to make sure that my husband's needs are met. So it happens that we use Aetna. How do they compare? Because I wouldn't want him to have to change doctors. So what do we do for people with chronic conditions in that situation?
Very similar to the Aetna network. So if they're currently accessing someone through Aetna, it's most likely that would not be any change. We also do contract ourselves on top of the First Health Network, so we also do direct agreements. So if there are any providers that are not in the First Health Network, we work to fill those gaps ourselves with direct agreements. And then on top of that, you have the Xero card. So if there is a provider that's not in either of the networks and you want to keep seeing them, you can nominate them and then just keep going there using that Xero card. We don't even need to have that agreement in place, again, because all the providers do accept cash. We can get that nomination done and provide that continued access without any gaps.
So that, that sounds like it could be workable. I, I think where I'm still struggling is with the timing of doing all of this. You said five months, five months until it's implemented?
Correct. It doesn't go into effect until October 1st. So we, so we have that five-month window that we can really start to be proactive in a lot of these things we're talking about.
Okay. Is it possible between now and whenever the, the roadshow starts, to make available to our 6,000-plus potential employees who will use this, the specifics of a network, your, your point, the point that you made about if you call a small provider and they say they never heard of you, that has happened to some of the teachers who've contacted me. And, and some of them are really worried because they're trying to provide for a child who may need special services, and, and they don't know if they, if those provisions will be local enough for them to be able to use it. Is there a way to make that network information available to them so that they can research it between now and the roadshow?
Curative.com/providers.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Curative.com/providers.
Provide, okay.
And I will say...
I was just going to say, that's also going to be part of the announcement that we send out right away. They're going to have that information in there as well. We're trying to put all those resources in there so they can start reaching out providers, too.
Okay. I think a lot of the discomfort and, and in some cases, panic, I mean, I had one teacher call me in tears, is, is because of, of a lack of communication between us and them. And, and so I guess I just want to make sure that that, I, I wish we didn't have to vote on this tonight. I, I actually wish that there was a lag time to allow for the, for those who are most directly affected to get the information that they need that would give them comfort with all of this.
May I address what you just stated?
Sure.
Okay. So keep in mind that this has been a process where we have to maintain a cone of silence throughout the process. So we're only allowed to share so much as we move through it. So the email that went out roughly 10 days ago was the first thing that we were allowed to put out. And that was after all of you had been notified that, that this was the direction we were looking. The next step was to make our employees aware. But even in that, we could only share so much because I can't share the contract because we were still within the negotiations and so forth. That's why tomorrow morning, if approved, every question that they've been asking, I believe, will be answered either through the video or through the Q&amp;A that's going to be sent out. If not, the team behind me will be prepared to answer those questions.
That's really helpful. I appreciate you explaining that, and, and I think that'll be helpful, too, to those who are still waiting for information. And I, and I like that there's this five-month lag period where everybody can get their questions answered and fill in those blanks, because healthcare is such a personal decision, and, and it's so critical to how we all function. But I appreciate your information very much, and again, I thank the committee for being so thorough in, in investigating all of this for us.
Mrs. Goodrich. So she made me think of some other questions. Of the 3,000 employees that are using the providers that won't be able to switch providers, do we know how many of those have, are chronic conditions?
Florida healthcare has not shared that, that specific viewpoint.
They're not, there are certain things, obviously, through HIPAA that they can't share.
Sure, sure. That's just, she brought up a good point. If someone's going through cancer treatments, and then to have to change providers would be pretty difficult.
For the providers that aren't coming over, it's only the 167 staff providers. So if they're going through cancer treatment, for example, that would be an existing network provider who's most likely already in the Curative Network. What we'd be able to do on the Xero card, most of the staff providers are primary care, kind of lower severity specialties.
Okay.
So members who are getting high severity care, they're already seeing a network provider through Florida healthcare.
Okay. And then my next question, because, again, the panic for the teachers and the lack of knowledge about this, for the reasons that you stated, what would the timeline look like if we didn't vote on this tonight and voted on it a month from now?
I, I will tell you what that will do is it will just shrink the amount of time, obviously, that we have to make the transition. And it's not just the transition of saying, "We're no longer Florida healthcare, we're now Curative." There's a whole behind-the-scenes process that has to happen for open enrollment. That's an electronic process that we do that, that allows everybody to, to go in and select their benefits. It will also delay us being able to answer some of the questions that they have, as well as being able to provide the support that they need in trying to find that new network of doctors. Because I'll tell you, the summer is the best time for us to be doing those kind of things.
Be a delay on the care navigators as well. So we're making the full care navigation team available so people can get their assigned care navigator immediately and start having those conversations rather than trying to navigate the tool. It is all self-service if people want to do that, but having that point of contact where they can have a conversation, explain the care they're currently getting, and we walk through how that's going to work on the Curative Plan, that, we want to make that available as early as possible for people.
Ms. Thompson. Thank you. So I did also want to thank the committee that, you know, I know a lot of time went into this, and I appreciate it because when I first got on this board, one of the biggest things I heard from teachers was, "We want to be able to afford healthcare. You can't, and insurance is just a giant pain in the butt." I also wanted to thank Ms. Elizabeth Albert for being a voting member, because I know that you really do speak for the teachers. So thank you for being part of that and bringing their voices forward. I had one question. This was very informative. I had quite a few teachers who emailed me and had a question, you know, they didn't like the idea of switching doctors, but then they're like, "I'm going to have to switch doctors, and it's going to cost more." So comparatively, if you have a similar plan and you switch over to Curative, what does that look like? Is it going to cost them more?
It really depends on, obviously, the level of coverage that they have, whether it's just themselves or family members. But what our plan would be, would be to direct everybody towards the, either the EPO value, which is the one he was discussing with the five doctors, or the EPO plan. There's really, honestly, unless that out-of-network piece is truly what you want, there's really no need to go to that third or fourth tier, no offense, third or fourth tier, because you're going to get that same level of coverage. And if there is an out-of-network doctor or a doctor you've been seeing that isn't in Network, he, he's already talked about, you know, multiple pathways. The, the biggest obstacle we're going to overcome or have to overcome are those Florida healthcare doctors. That is going to be the number-one obstacle, I feel like we have, because they have been so embedded in VCS for as long as they have been. But as I mentioned to the committee when we were talking about, you know, if this was a direction we wanted to go, I mean, we can either be on the forefront or we can be chasing from behind. But we're not the only district that is, that is looking at making this move. So I, I do want to put that out there as well.
And so do we still have the plan options? Because you mentioned that last year we did the one with if you had a single parent, one child, two...
We left that one in. We did. We decided to leave the five tiers alone as, as we had it because we didn't want that to be an additional decision someone had to make.
Correct. All right. Thank you very much.
Other thing on cost as well is I think it is important to consider the total cost for members if they're using any of their benefits during the year. That is, you know, copays, that is deductibles, that is out-of-pocket cost. The current out-of-pocket maximum, I believe, is $9,000. So if anybody has something catastrophic, it's $9,000 out-of-pocket. On the Curative Plan, that would be zero.
Or anything else?
Mrs. Brosmer. I think you may already have answered this question, but my expectation is that in this transition period, there are going to be a lot of phone calls and, and "what do I do now" kinds of things. Is a point-of-contact number or something going to be made available to, to the employees so that they can get their questions answered when they're, when they're able to sit down and do this?
Talk about the care navigators?
Yeah. So the care navigators will be, will make those assignments, basically, as soon as we have the contract signed, we'll be able to make the assignments to the list of employees. They would get the number, an email, and they can either reach out by phone, text, or email to those care navigators. They'll also have the member services line. Again, that's 24/7/365, so they can call that. You can text our member services line if you don't want to sit on the phone. You can email and get back a thoughtful email response, so those will all be available immediately. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Plus, we'll also have our team that, that will be available as well. And I know that they have been fielding questions through our insurance and benefits emailbox. So, so we've been trying, just like you all have been emailed, we have been, too, and we're trying to respond. But again, our responses are limited to what we can say at this point.
And, and I do think that's a really important point for the, for this moment. The care navigators are assigned at the time that the baseline assessment is done. Did I understand that correctly?
So typically, we assign them on the first day of the plan. That's how we usually do it. And then you can reach out to them before your baseline visit, but you meet with them at the baseline visit. What we're doing here is making a special exception, and we're assigning them the day the contract is signed.
Okay. And just as kind of a random question, maybe, on, you said that each person who is covered needs to do a baseline assessment, and...
Everybody who's over 18 on the plan start date.
So a parent does it for a child? And does, I guess, let, let's say, the wife is a teacher and the husband works someplace else. Can she do, can she provide the information since it's virtual? Can she provide the information for everybody, for her husband as well? Or does he have to make his own contact with you for the baseline assessment?
He would have to do his own baseline visit. Now, we do make allowances, and we can have you and your spouse on the same call. We can do that if that's of interest, but both members would have to show up for the call.
And only one is necessary for a child? Is that correct?
As long as at least one of the parents has done their baseline visit, all of the children under 18 would be covered at zero.
Okay. So the child doesn't have to have a separate body of information? Okay.
Want to get the parents through the baseline visit. Now, once that child hits 18, they would have to do their own baseline visit.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
Okay, Mrs. Goodrich.
I just wanted to also thank everyone for their hard work, because I didn't say that when I spoke earlier, so thanks for all your hard work.
As always, I want to thank everyone that volunteered to be on the insurance committee because that, they spend a lot of hours and days and times doing that, and I appreciate it. And as I've said in the past, if you want to be a part of it, you've just got to step up and volunteer, because they will be happy to add you to the piece. But I sincerely mean to everybody that served on it, thank you, because I know you gave up time. And I want to thank you for this presentation today. I first learned about this on April 30th, when we did the agenda conference for this next board meeting. And at that meeting, I immediately said, because I've been with Volusia County Schools 38 years, and I've always used Volusia County Schools insurance, even as a single parent, I did that when I was raising my own two children. Thankfully, they're grown now, and I no longer have to provide them with insurance. I'm very happy about that. But I've always used it, I still use it. And so I take it very seriously that when I do cast a vote for any changes such as this, it's impacting myself directly also. That's why I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this. Just a few questions I have. Your plan was very clear and in-depth. I appreciate the time that you took today to try to cover all of it. I do like the fact that you, Stephanie, your team and all has been answering questions. I understand until we make a final decision, they can't set us up and answer everything. But I found the website myself to be easy to look just for some of, like, my primary care physician and things like that. But when you say we're going to switch to Publix Pharmacy, which I have no problem with Publix, okay? Publix has been very good at times where some of the medications they offer are actually at zero cost for people, so I'm used to using them. My only thing is their pharmacies is just kind of like with Florida healthcare. If you didn't get to Florida healthcare pharmacy within X number of hours, then that's when you had to go to Walgreens. And where I'm at, there's only one Walgreens. Even though there's a Walgreens almost on every corner, it's only one of them that will allow you to get the prescription after hours. So what are we going to do about, because we know invariably, it's usually with children. They get sick, and you take them to an urgent care, and you need that prescription to get into them right away because they're running a fever or whatever. What are we going to do if the Publix pharmacy is closed and parents can't access the medication that they need that evening?
Yeah. I understand this. I've had this happen personally to me with my son at an urgent care with a pharmacy after hours. So we have a list of acute medications. They're generally low-cost, things like antibiotics, inhaler refills, steroids, and those, you can fill them at any pharmacy. It will, the claim will always go through. Now, these are very, generally very low-dollar medications, so the fact that Walgreens costs slightly more, it doesn't matter in that case. What we're trying to really avoid is those expensive specialty medications getting filled at the CVS and at the Walgreens. specialty medications getting filled at the CVS and at the Walgreens. But if you have that $2 antibiotic that you need it at 11:00 PM on a Friday, you can go get that at any pharmacy. It will just go through.
Okay. Because that was one of the things that came up with the pharmacy piece. And then, any child that, because we deal in students lots of times, and I mean, but even for our adults, anyone that is born already with an issue or having a medical condition and they already have a, you know, they could, they could be 10 years old, they could be 25 now, and they have had care for that. I realize you're going to try, if their specialty doctor is currently not in, you're going to try to get them in. But you're going to at least guarantee a short period of time while you're working on that, that they will not have to change doctors, correct?
Everybody apart from the 167 Florida healthcare providers, yes, there's a transition of care period. They will not provide care through the staff providers, and there's nothing we can do about that. But everybody else, yes, there is a transition of care period, and we'll make sure that if people are going to have to change, that that is done, that they get time to complete their current care, and that we make sure that transition is as smooth as possible. And we would always try to avoid the transition if we're able to.
Okay. So the biggest message we need to get out in the event that this goes through tonight to families is if your doctors don't show up currently on the list tomorrow or the day after, you need to go ahead and recommend that they be put on the list so that come October 1st, their care will continue. And in reality, 167 doctors is not a very large percentage here even in Volusia County for the number of doctors that we have. So there's only 167 being excluded. Because I think a lot of people thought that just if their doctor took Florida healthcare, that they were being excluded. But my doctor has taken Florida healthcare but is already, as I said, on your list. So I know my doctor, the practice is not going to be excluded. And then if, because here, the people I think that are struggling the most with this are people that already have conditions, type 1 diabetes, stage 3 or stage 4 cancers. Those are the things. And those are the people that we need to continue to care for and ensure, because we don't want someone with type 1 diabetes to not have their medicine or have access to what they need. We don't want someone that has already been classified as being terminal to have to go through some struggling situations in a time when what they're already facing is not ideal. And so I think that's the part we just need to realize is we're here, yes, to make a decision. And I truly love the fact that everything can be a zero cope. Because truth be told, I probably at times have skipped a few of those things myself along the way, thinking, "Well, I've never hit my deductible, you know, so it's always out-of-pocket." And the fact that you're setting it up to say, "No, we want you to receive that care," I think is absolutely what our community needs. I've said this before. Some of our paraprofessionals, some of our office specialists out there, possibly some of our bus drivers, I've watched them work just for insurance. And there was a time period where some, and there may still be a few, they've had to, after they get paid, come in and write a check. So ideally, they need a spouse because they take home no money. It all goes towards insurance. And then they've written checks to us to cover the rest of their insurance. And we need to move into a situation because when that's happened, I can guarantee you, they're not the people that are getting the preventative care because they're looking at, "Do I have any more money to move forward with that?" But thank you for being here today. Thank you for being thorough. I want to thank Ms. Workman and everyone for answering all the questions that I posed to you and put out. And seriously, the Insurance Committee, once again, everyone that served on that, thank you so much for serving and spending the last couple of months to try and figure out a way so that all of our, because I've always said, I'll accept their recommendation. Now, if they ever split, it might be a little harder, but my understanding is this was a unanimous decision.
Yes, ma'am, it was. And it was probably one of the easiest decisions because we voted one time.
Oh, and that's not usually typical. I know sometimes you've gone back to the table and listened to the presentations and asked more questions.
We have. But we were all on the same page.
Right. Any further questions? Okay, then, we will be moving on to item 4.01, which is supposed to be short. Thank you very much, all of you. 4.01, Quarterly Report on House Bill 1473, School Safety. Dr. Bogobin?
Captain Smith, would you join us, please? As you know, Captain Smith is our Director for Safety and Security, and it will probably be one of the shortest presentation of the, of this afternoon.
Welcome, Captain Smith.
You have a record to maintain, Captain Smith.
I'll do my best. Good afternoon, Superintendent, Madam Chair, and Board Members. I'm Captain Todd Smith, the Director of Safety and Security for Volusia County Schools. Today, we will be discussing the quarterly safety report in accordance with Florida state statutes. This presentation aligns with Policy 511, Safety of Facilities. This presentation also aligns with Guardrail 2, Provide Conditions That Enhance Student Learning. In accordance with House Bill 1473, school districts are required to report four things each quarter: the number and percentage of schools, including charter schools, inspected or re-inspected during the quarter; the number and percentage of schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies. In the third quarter, eight schools were inspected or re-inspected by the Office of Safe Schools. This represents 10.39% of the schools inspected or re-inspected. Eight schools had no school safety requirement deficiencies. Therefore, 100% of schools had no school safety requirement deficiencies. Very good. Before I conclude the presentation, I'd like to touch on something real quick. There are hundreds of ways a school can fail this audit. If a single door is unlocked in the entire school, they fail. If a single gate is out of compliance, they fail. If they're missing a single document of the hundreds required, they fail. The principals and staff are taking these audits serious. The results show that they care, and we have created a culture surrounding safety and security, and we're working hard to ensure compliance. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone out there that has done a great job.
They're doing great.
Any questions? We appreciate you. You did it in record time.
Thank you, Captain Smith.
All right. We're going to take a very short, because we're behind restroom break. And so can we be back in here at 3:20? It's 3:10 now. We're going to start back at 3:20. Thank you.
We preloaded for you.
Just in case.
Welcome back. It is 3:21 PM. We are now moving on to item 4.02, Planning for Student Growth, the School Concurrent Process. Dr. Bogobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have with us here Ms. Patty Corr, our Chief Operating Officer, along with Mr. Ron Young, our Director for Business and Planning Services, joined by Mr. our Director for Business and Planning Services, joined by Mr. Vogus, our Coordinator for Planning, and Mr. James Roberts, our Specialist for Planning. They will be sharing with you today a presentation that pertains to Planning for Growth, the School Concurrent Process.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Balgobin, Chair Haines, School Board members. We were asked to bring forward this information, so we're happy to share with you some detailed information about how the Planning Department works. With us also is Cody Shepherd, the newest member of our team, sitting behind me. He has joined us and is working on the west side of the county planning area, while James handles the east side, as well as other duties as assigned. This presentation conforms to the following district policies, and there are four. You can see them there, Policies 611 through 614, which are all centered around our planning process and our school concurrency process, and it's the work that Cody and James do on a daily basis. This also aligns with our strategic plan in Guard Rail 3, to improve our operational efficiencies and maximize resources to support student learning. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Vogus, who's... There is a lot of technical lingo and jargon that goes along in the planning process, so we're going to just kind of front-load some of that information to make it a little bit easier as we go through. So Mr. Vogus will start us off, and James and Mr. Young will be jumping in at some point, and I'll be taking notes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Core. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today with you all and talk you a little bit about our planning process, the concurrency process, and what we go through to ensure that we have adequate capacity for scholars across our district. As much as my inner teacher wants to do some vocabulary exercises with you guys and maybe a foldable activity, I know we're a little bit pressed for time, so I'm just going to go over these words quickly, some of these terms with you guys quickly. And these definitions come out of our inter-local agreement and are also part of the policies that Ms. Core mentioned previously, so I want to make sure we have transparency and that we're clear on some of this terminology. Mr. Roberts is going to be detailing this... We go into this more depth and having more information regarding these terms. The first one on here, these are in alphabetical order, just because it felt good. Capacity Enhancement Agreement. That's basically an agreement we enter into between a municipality, the school board, and an applicant to make sure that we're ensuring we have adequate capacity, student stations within the area, that there's either being a revision or rezoning, or any kind of an increase in residential density that we've been made aware of. In order for a developer or... In order for a developer to move forward, or any applicant, we have to issue a Certificate of School Concurrent, and that basically means we've reviewed that. James will go into detail about that, but that we've gone through the application, we've looked at the number of houses that are going to be coming in, and that we've made the determination that there is adequate capacity. Concurrent Service Area is a little bit different than some of the areas we talk about in the district. We'll go into that in more detail, but basically, it's a geographic area. When we're looking at concurrency, we're looking at the schools within that area that are being impacted by either the rezoning or the change in the comp plan. So it's the area that is in question. The other thing we put down here was the Day 20 Membership Count. You probably hear lots of different numbers. The number that we use when we're looking at student enrollment for the current year is the Day 20 Membership Count. It's kind of the generally accepted indicator of what the average enrollment at that school's going to be during the school year. We know that our district is transient. People come and go. We know they have choices. They make different choices throughout the year. But the Day 20 number is really the one that our department uses, and many of the departments in the district use, to ensure that we have some sort of commonality across the board. So we look at that Day 20 count. Once again, a Finding of Adequate School Capacity is on here. That basically means we know we have adequate capacity in terms of student stations to meet the demands that that subdivision or that applicant is going to place on us over the next 10 to 20 years. So that's a forward-looking number, making sure that we're ensuring that we've got either in place or in our five-year plan, either through construction, rezoning, or any number of a means to have the ability to support those students that are coming in. When we look... When James looks at an application that comes in, one of the things we do is we look at the number of houses that are being built, the number of multifamily units, the number of mobile homes, whatever may be involved, and we applied what's called a student generation rate. So that student generation rate is going to... He's going to tell you about that a little bit, but it is different for single-family residents, for multifamily residents, and mobile homes. But that's a number that's come up with, and we'll be talking about our impact fee study and how we determine that. Level of Service, LOS, we've talked about that before, but that's basically a measurement of the utilization of the permanent capacity at the school. What is the level of service? Where are we now? If we have 1,000 seats at that school and we have 750 kids, we're at a 75% level of service, just to make it easy math. A mitigation agreement is something that not too long ago we passed to the school board. That's an agreement with a developer that typically provides some sort of compensation to make sure that we're getting to adequate capacity. They're going to pay school impact fees. They may be donating a piece of land. They may be doing something to ensure that we're going to have the ability to provide the student stations needed to cover that development that's going to be happening. So mitigation agreement is something that comes up. The other number is Permanent School Capacity. That's the number of students that could be housed at a school site at any given time based on satisfactory permanent student units, and it does not include portables. And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. Portables are meant to be temporary. They're relocatable, if that's a word. They're typically meant to be there for five years or less, even though in many instances we have portables on-site for longer, but it can have a significant impact. I was looking at a school just the other day that has a permanent capacity of 702, which would put it at 105% capacity, but there are seven portables there. So at about 20 students per portable, that's another 140, so it gives the appearance that that school is underutilized, but it's because those portables are on-site. So when we're looking at development, when we're looking at the future, we're looking at that permanent number without the portables, because our goal is to eliminate those portables. It's just a short-term solution. We want to have permanent student stations for all of our students. That being said, I did want to align some of the policies we have there, review some of the policies that align to the work we're doing that are also tied in with the ILA. I'm not going to read them to you, but I did just want to reference them real quickly. And to mention again, when it comes to school planning, when it comes to looking at rezonings that municipalities are doing, looking at work that developers are doing, we do not approve or disapprove those developments that are coming in. We simply state whether there is or isn't adequate capacity, and we pass that information on to the municipalities within which those developments are happening. So it's not our... We don't throw a red card down and say, "No, you can't do this development." We say, "We need this sort of mitigation in order to provide adequate capacity," and give that information to the developer as well as the municipalities. Under the school planning policy, we do look at rezoning. We look at land use changes by municipalities, and we also look at comprehensive plan amendments when those things are put into place, and we are involved in the process the whole way. Policy 613 deals with school concurrency. This was originally mandated by state law. It's our guidelines and our guardrails, as we like to call them here, are the inter-local agreement, which defines the level of service and also defines the concurrency areas that we look at. Whenever a developer is requesting site plan approval for a subdivision, that approval process has to come to us first before it goes to the municipality, and that's what I meant by, we look at it, we give an opinion, we don't approve or disapprove the plans. We also have school impact fees... In fact, impact fees, very good, which are under Policy 614. Those are determined by... And it's interesting, because in many of our districts in the state, they're actually determined by county ordinance, but for us in Volusia County, we're the only county where we have the task of determining those school impact fees, which we do through negotiated rulemaking, which means that we actually engage our stakeholders in the community that come together, and then we'll be coming back to the school board to determine those final impact fees in the future. At present, we're due for an impact fee study in the 2026 year, so we'll be putting a committee of folks together. We'll be doing that work. We also hire a consultant to assist us with that work, and then we come back to the board, and the board actually approves the impact fees that are charged in Volusia County and managed by the county. With that being said, I will now turn it over to Mr. Roberts, who's going to tell you a little bit more about impact fees and the process we go through.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Balgobin, Chairman Haines, and the board. This is a comparison of the impact fees from many of our partner school districts. We are about middle of the road. Something interesting to note here, Lake County Schools and Orange County Schools both have a tiered impact fee system for their single-family homes. Depending upon how large they build a house is a different impact fee. So for the purposes of this comparison, I took the 2,000 square foot to 2,499 square foot, which is about the average size of home being built in Florida at the moment, to show a almost one-to-one comparison. Our current impact fee for single-family homes is $7,022.70. Multifamily is $3,728.95, and mobile homes is $1,415.25. This was determined by the board based on recommendations of our consultant for our most recent impact fee study, which was conducted in 2022. Interesting point there is that the consultant actually remembered... Recommended higher fees than what were adopted by the board. They recommended an excess of $8,000 for single-family, over $4,000 for multifamily, and just over $1,600 for manufactured homes. If they were... If we were to do a flat impact fee for all types of residential development, they would have recommended a $7,000 for all uses. The student generation rate is also determined during the impact fee study. Again, the most recent was 2022. Currently, it's set at .258 for single-family, .137 for multifamily, and .052 for mobile homes. What that means is that our generation's rate says, for every 100 single-family homes, you're going to end up with about 26 students. For multifamily, you're going to end up with about 14 students, and for mobile homes, you might end up with about five. These numbers have been changing over the past few impact fee studies. In 2013, the single-family was actually a .305, multifamily was .104, and mobile homes were .036. As you can see, the single families have fallen from 2013 to today, about 15%. The multifamily has risen by 31%, as have the mobile homes. They've come up about 44%. We do expect in our next impact fee study, which will be beginning the process of at the end of this year, that that multifamily number is going to increase a little bit more.
The inter-local agreement I mentioned before is an agreement we have between us and all of the municipalities in our area, including the county. That was mandated by statute. It allows us an opportunity to share and coordinate information for existing and planned schools and help in the whole growth process as it relates to public school facilities. It is implemented... It's implemented on a... Reviewed on a five-year basis, and we actually are coming up in 2026 with an opportunity to review the inter-local agreement. On a... Twice a year, we meet with a technical coordinating committee, which includes all of the planners from the different municipalities, and then twice a year, we also have an oversight committee that meets and includes, I believe, one of the board members, Ms. Goodrich, maybe, who's attended that meeting, and we look at the inter-local agreement as well as the work of the Planning Department at that time. It has resulted in a district-wide uniform school concurrency program and has been a powerful tool for us to use in the management of school capacity.
So to talk about level of service in a little bit more detail, as we previously said, it's a measure of the utilization of our schools expressed as a percentage. So number of students versus how many student stations are available in a given area. That given area is, of course, the concurrency service areas as defined in our inter-local agreement. The elementary and middle school CSAs are coterminous with the attendance boundaries of those schools, but the high school concurrency service areas are not. They include multiple schools, except in the case of the southeast, where there's only New Center to be tied, and northwest, where there's only T. Dewitt Taylor. In our northeast, it includes Seabreeze, Mainland, Atlantic, and Spruce Creek. In the southwest, it includes Pine Ridge and Deltona, and in the west, it's the Land High and University High. What you'll see here are just maps of those concurrency service areas. As I stated, elementary and middle school are both coterminous to their attendance boundaries, and then here are the groupings for the high schools. Concurrent service areas in our determinations on adequacy as mandated by the ILA and as part of our concurrency process. This is just a quick overview of that concurrency review process. There are two phases. The first is, we call, the Finding of Adequate Capacity. This comes when a developer is seeking a comprehensive plan amendment or a future land use map amendment. These are the ones that BJ mentioned, are on a longer-term planning horizon. The second is the reservation certificate, and that has to be issued and... Has to be issued and accepted by the municipality before they can issue a final development order to these developers. The process is essentially, do we have capacity? If yes, we issue a certificate. If not, we then move into a recommendation that we negotiate an agreement. Depending upon the phase, it could be either the capacity enhancement at the adequate capacity phase, or the mitigation agreement at the reservation certificate phase. With a successful negotiation, we then issue the certificate they need, and they proceed. If the developer chooses that they do not wish to have a negotiated agreement, then their project will be postponed. It is not, again, we do not ever say that you are not able to build here. That is not within our power. That falls to the municipalities. We simply issue our letter based on whether or not there is capacity available at that time.
Well, if the surrounding area has capacity.
Oh, okay. This is just a quick glance at the application that developers are required to submit. The third page is of note. It has to be reviewed and signed by a member of the local municipality's Planning Department so that they're fully aware that the developer is applying to us, and so that they can verify the information the developer does provide in the application. Our concurrency evaluation, it includes whether we have capacity right now or within three years after the final development order. If we do not have capacity in the concurrency service area that's affected, we look at the adjacency. The adjacency is another concurrency service area of the same level. Concurrent service areas are not automatically in adjacency. It depends on travel time. Diversity islands do not count in the termination of adjacencies. The intercoastal waterway, it may be, you know, Long Street and Port Orange may be next to each other, but because the interlocal... Intercoastal waterway separates them, they cannot be considered as an adjacency. And then in a capacity reserved at the schools for specific programs, if that capacity is taken up, they are not considered to have the availability in their adjacency. If there's no availability in any adjacency, then we move on to mitigation, which is, again, the negotiated agreement. This includes things such as the donation of a school site, funds for construction based on student station cost. Those are the two most common, and those are matched dollar-for-dollar by impact fee credits given to the developer to use as they see fit. One other consideration that has currently expired in the inter-local agreement are interim levels of service. Certain schools that are constrained may be declared or given an interim level of service, at which point their level of service cannot exceed whatever that set percentage is, and therefore, they cannot be used as adjacencies either. Currently, we do not have any, but when the inter-local agreement was started, there were a handful that included what is now Burns and Samsula. This is a brief look at the school concurrency calculation. Essentially, to calculate your level of service, you take your current enrollment based on Day 20. You add in how many reservations have been produced by developers that have come before. That's your projected enrollment. You divide that over your available capacity within the CSA, and you have your current level of service. When determining for a new development, you add in the projected students that that development will create to your calculation, and you get your projected level of service. Once again, if it's below 115%, 120% at high schools, as determined by the inter-local agreement, we issue the certificate. If it's at 115 or 120 or above, we bring in the... If it's at 115 or 120 or above, we bring in the adjacent CSAs. And if it's still over 115 or 120, that's when we recommend the proportionate share mitigation agreement. As I mentioned earlier, proportionate share mitigation, it allows developers to proceed with their construction, even if we don't currently have the available seats, by providing for seats in the future. Again, through upfront payment of impact fees, contribution of land, upfront payment of impact fees, sorry, payment for land acquisition, or even mitigation banking. Now, just a quick aside here, this is our VCS Development Reservations Map. Available currently on our district webpage. It live-tracks all of the development information that we are given by our developers. We update it when those applications are received, with where the development is, how many dwelling units are associated with that development, and how many students are projected to be generated by that development. This particular site has a few functions. You can activate municipalities. You can search for only developments within certain municipalities. You can review by specific types, if you want to look at only reservations versus only There are also no-impact types of concurrences. These are developments that are 10 dwelling units or fewer. And then there are exempt concurrences, and those are 55-plus communities. There's another one that we have here called not reviewed, and those are for large developments that we know are incoming but have not yet officially submitted their application. They're all tracked here. For example, we do have Deering Park here in the southeast, and I zoomed in way too far. As you can see, if you click upright, here we go. All of the information I mentioned, the total, single-family homes, single-family, multifamily homes, this one is an adequacy, so this is the total permitted. And this is the reservation associated with that same development. For the first phase, they have 444, single-family and 93 multifamily. Scrolling through that will give you more information, such as the student generation. We also have South Village, still in the southeast, moving further north. Now Avalon Park, though it's currently in development limbo, is coming at some point. And then we have Ormond Crossings here in our county, and Ormond Station, which is just over the line in Flagler, which we're also accounting for, as we're expecting it to affect our local schools.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Balgobin. I get to talk about the fun stuff, the stuff that you probably already know about, but we'll talk about it again. Some of our recent capital projects are Beachside Elementary, Deltona Middle School, Tomoka Elementary School replacement, Torrey T. Elementary School replacement. We had some ongoing projects as well. Of course, Edith I. Stark, the elementary school replacement, Orange City Elementary School replacement. Some of the things that are in the pipeline are the Enterprise Replacement, that will provide service for Enterprise and DeBarry. New Smyrna Middle Classroom Edition, and I'll just skip down some and include the Silver Sands Middle School Edition. They will provide middle school relief in that south, mostly that southwest area. Pathways Elementary Classroom Edition, that's an 11-classroom edition, and that's to provide relief for a lot of the things that James was just talking about in the northeast, also with what's happening in Flagler County. Pine Ridge High School Classroom Edition, that is to provide space for all the growth that's going on in that, back behind Deltona and Osteen, as well as some relief for University High School. Repetillo Elementary, as James stated, there is a large development coming in in the New Smyrna area, out on the 9544 area corridor, if you will, and over 6,000 dwellings at present that we know about. Think it's going to be much larger than that. And of course, the Timbercrest Classroom Edition to, Timbercrest is overcrowded as
So as Ron just mentioned, we do, we do building replacement, expansion to handle the growth that we get. We also use attendance boundary adjustments, and there are various other tools at our disposal to handle the growth, which none of us can deny is happening in our area. One of the other things that our department does beyond just concurrency is, we do manage the interlocal agreement. As I mentioned, we have oversight committees, we have technical coordinating committees. We also are involved with the half-cent sales tax project oversight committee, and will be greatly involved with the half-cent sales tax initiative as it moves forward. We also have one-on-one meetings with municipalities, with the planning groups, and often are involved in different projects. We're going to be bringing you something this summer that I think is a great win-win with a municipality who is in need of some property to expand their sportsplex. They have an ECHO grant, they have some other funding, some things that they're doing. They sort of were in need of some property. Coincidentally, we needed some property that they had. It is truly a win-win situation where, when things go through, hopefully, we'll be in a position to expand one of our schools to help with growth, and they'll be in a position to provide the residents of their community with a phenomenal sportsplex. And those are the kind of things, quite honestly, that are really fun that we get to do and work with the municipalities on a one-on-one basis. We're also involved with their planning boards. We get to attend a lot of evening meetings, which you guys are very familiar with. And we're also engaged with the development community. We are members of the Volusia County Growth Management Council, so we daily receive emails on any applications that are going into them for any revisions or any new plans that are hitting the comp plans in the municipalities across the county. We've renewed our relationship with the Volusia County Association of Responsible Development, which is great, because that gets us in with the developers, the lawyers, the engineers, with the people that are doing a lot of the work in our area. And we're also very involved with the Volusia Flagler Transportation Planning Organization, or the TPO, because we know that part of our equation is making sure that we're getting schools close enough to kids, and when they can't walk there, they need to drive there, we need to get buses there. So we're involved in that whole transportation process as much as possible. We also like to remain engaged with our business development community, because if we know what businesses are coming, where those businesses are going, we also have an idea on where families are going to be moving, where they're becoming. We know, like, for example, with that French aviation company that's going to be coming to town, they're bringing families with them. Those families are going to need places to live. We suspect a lot of them may be down in that Deering Park area, but we need to be prepared for that, because we know that's a reality. We're also involved with Volusia County Economic Development and the Team Volusia Economic Development Group. So we try to follow the processes, protocols that are set in place by the ILA and by district policy, but we also reach out and we try to make sure that we're in our community and active, so that we can do what's best for the families and the scholars of Volusia County
Great job, team. Thank you. That was a lot of information quickly, so we are here for any questions. Chair Haynes?
Mrs. Brosmer.
I just have a couple of questions. My background in comprehensive plans and concurrences is generally limited to roads and water and stormwater, and this is fluid in a whole different way. How does rezoning affect all of this? Because if you're relying, sorry, Ron, but if you're relying on school boundaries for some of these assessments, how does that factor in?
That's one of the tools we use to manage our capacity. So as we have growth in different areas, we see some, you know, obviously, some neighborhoods age out, students aren't there, students are there. What James and Cody are able to do by looking at their computers, as the old man would say, is they're able to see where the students are, where the student growth areas are. And where we have capacity at schools, we're looking at making adjustments to those attendance boundaries to make sure that our schools are hitting that sweet spot around 95% with their level of service. Ron probably wants to add something to that?
Just that these guys work on that all the time. Cody and James do a great job, and Cody's been working on the west side since he came on board and made some great strides, and soon we'll be proposing some zoning changes for the coming years. It'll be a multi-year proposal.
And I think that's, that's one of the things that we're trying to do, is get a grasp on that and come up with a plan to bring back to you guys that will look at a three-to-five year type of a plan, instead of what we don't want to do is move kids from school to school. But we also don't want parents or buses driving by a school with a busload of kids that could be going to that school, going to somewhere further away. We want to try to get that proximity.
I appreciate that, and thank you for that explanation. I think that's what I'm trying to reconcile here. There's a 10-to-20-year timeframe and a three-year timeframe, and then almost every year, there are some boundary adjustments. So it seems like a very fluid process to me, and I'm trying to figure out where all of these various timeframes fit. My only other question is about student generation rate, because it seems as though that's also very fluid and has changed considerably over the last number of years. So how does that affect maybe where we are now? Does it force us to change one of these timeframes and reevaluate sooner than we otherwise might?
So the student generation rate is set as part of the impact fee study. It's done every four or five years. Like we said, we have one coming up for 2026. And it sets that student generation rate for the next period until the next impact fee study comes due. And over the past few years of this impact fee study, it has changed, as the demographics have changed. We used to have, multifamily in this county was traditionally not producing many students, but that has significantly changed. Unfortunately, those studies can only capture what is happening right then and in the past. It can't, they can't predict what's going to happen in the future. So we can only adjust with those impact fee studies based on what's come before. And as I mentioned, we are expecting that multifamily student generation rate to increase again. That single-family may slightly decrease again as well. It's all based upon how many students we have and what type of residence that they live in.
So we're looking forward to next year, going into the student generation rate, because it is fluid. And it's not fluid in the way that we agree with it being fluid, but we'll take that up with the demographer next year.
And I think, just not to beat a dead horse, but if you look at some of the east side versus west side, there are some differences in multifamily. And we know that there's, if you take Daytona Beach Shores, for example, that typically is multifamily development, which has been occupied by people who are closer to my age than childbearing age. But in just talking to their city manager not too long ago, they mentioned that they're starting to see families move in. They're seeing a change in those, in some of those condominiums. So as that happens, one of the things James and the crew wants to make sure we do is that we're capturing that.
I think that's what got me thinking about this, because it would be hard to stick to a three-to-five-year planning period with changes being, changes occurring constantly. So you may have a three-to-five-year planning period, but you have to stay on top of it and update more often than that. That was my only reason for asking.
That's why we bring that five-year capital plan back to the board every year, so it's a floating budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to say thank you. And Mr. Cologne and I were here the last time when we had to talk about the impact fees, and it was a tough subject, but I still think that we did the right thing at that point, because based on the data that we had, we needed, single-family homes, that's where the bulk of our children were coming from. And yes, there is a change. I think part of the change of what's happening right now, and why we're seeing multifamily increase with students, is the lack of affordability of homes. And so they're renting apartments, and I'm running into a lot of families that that's what they're doing. And/or they relocated to Florida, and that's what they were used to doing from one of the large cities where they lived, was renting apartments. So I think it's going to continue to change. I think as they build more homes, though, especially up there in the Ormond area off of 40, where they were predicting at first that one community would be 10,000, I think they've lowered it to like 8,750 now or something. I think there's going to be a lot of kids coming out of there. But thank you for everything, and if there's no further questions, it is 3:57 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.